Welcome to our planning board meeting. This is our eighteenth meeting of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Let's go around the room and introduce ourselves. I'm Denny Swenson, Chair. Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Meredith.
Meredith Hall, member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Taglias, member.
And we believe Rich Beeler, our secretary, will be joining us momentarily. And let's have, introduce the staff, Tim.
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And do we have Allison tonight?
Allison Quinn, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
Excellent, very well done. Do we have Allison? I'm, I'm sorry, Julia.
Julia Getman-Clark.
Wonderful, happy new year, everyone. Okay. All right, so our first order of business is the accessory dwelling unit article for February town, special town meeting. And what I thought we could do is have Kathleen walk through her new language, her new proposed language. We would hear from Alex. He would do a walkthrough of his red line that was requested by Cheryl and agreed to by the rest of the planning board. And then we could quickly hear from anyone from the public. We would limit that to two to three minutes each. Then we will discuss as a board. And we are hoping to have some ideas on next steps by seven p.m. So, thank you. So Kathleen, I thought seven minutes, does that sound good? Okay. Just gonna grab another version, please, please.
I'd like to share my screen, please.
Is that something, Tim, you can help her?
Was it, by the way?
Kathleen O'Donnell, I tried to scare.
You should be able to do it now, Kathleen.
Okay, thank you. So what you will now see on the screen, if you will recall where we were on this, we had a draft that was done December sixteenth. It had, it had been through some changes and all that sort of stuff. But the major problem was that the in the version that was before the warrant committee and submitted to the select board was done in November and had crossouts and changes and all that sort of stuff, and it was sort of a mess. So I cleaned up the version that we had. And what you will see on the screen is the version that I sent on December twenty-second, which I shared with the warrant committee on Monday. Denny and I attended that meeting with the warrant committee. And we sort of, so I presented this version of the, of the article. What you will see in red and in highlighted are changes that I've made to reflect some typographical errors that Alex pointed out. And the major change, we will see further on down. I did not change the language on the purpose and intent. I liked my language better. The definition of accessory dwelling unit is from the model accessory dwelling unit bylaw has been adopted in at least fifteen to twenty towns, and I decided to keep that language notwithstanding Mr. Whiteside's objections. What you will see in numbers, in letter C, is the provision that I had originally put in that provided for as of right. As we all know, there's been a lot of discussion and anxiety over this provision. And, and so I have highlighted it and assumed that the board would have to take a vote on whether or not they want to delete that. It would not obviously be my preference, but there seems to be a lot of anxiety about this. And so I drafted this bylaw to reflect the fact that people are not are not anxious for as of right. So that has been crossed out, it's highlighted, it needs to be voted. So there are some changes that are made just to reflect the fact that there is no longer an as-of-right provision in this. There is no amnesty for prior created units that never got permits. And so the language in the, in the draft really reflects the fact that, you know, you are going to be having to get a special permit from the Board of Appeals for any accessory dwelling unit, whether it's inside, outside, underneath, above, in a balloon, whatever, you need a permit. So language has gone on that they have to, the Board of Appeals will be issuing these special permits. There had been some suggested language that directed the Board of Appeals to take certain actions. In my opinion, the Board of Appeals, consisting of an excellent panel of lawyers, knows what they're doing and doesn't need the direction and the, and the, and the requirements that had been proposed. Owner occupancy requirement is still in here. Temporary apartments are allowed to go for approval as a permanent accessory dwelling unit should they choose to do so. They don't have to wait until it expires if that's what they choose to do. Administration enforcement, as you can see, very little changes. I really, as I said, wanted to make sure that the warrant committee wasn't faced with something that was so significantly altered that, that they would, you know, their heads would explode. So as you will see going back, I said there's two major provisions, and those deal with the fact that there is no longer language in here that allows units as of right. And I will be willing to answer any questions.
Very helpful.
Well, I think that was less than seven minutes.
I was just gonna say, that was much less than seven minutes. Okay, so, thank you. And, okay, so, so under, under C, you crossed out what's, what's in, in yellow. And, and in D, what's in yellow? Would that be crossed out too?
It was creation of an ADU in an expansion of an existing dwelling or in a detached building shall require the issuance of a special permit. That was language that.
Wouldn't it be all ADUs? In other words, wouldn't you just cross out?
Yeah, I think that was an error on my part, so yes.
So that it would just have a line through it?
No, it just would say that.
Creation of an ADU. You're in D.
C, sorry.
So you would take out what's in yellow? So it'd be creation of an ADU? Okay.
Yes.
So that's what we're voting.
Yes, the only thing I didn't do was I forgot to cross that out, but I highlighted it to say that that part would be the part that would come out.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to be sure other people.
No, no, I apologize.
No, 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 don't apologize. I, I think that, that, well, as you know, I, I have been a big proponent of, of wanting that, the special permit. So if we I, I think.
As I said in my memo earlier today, that I believe that requires a vote because it changes the quantum of vote and from the one that we submitted to the warrant committee and to the Board of Selectmen was a majority vote. And with the deletion of this language, it is now a two-thirds vote. Uptown meeting.
Uptown meeting, okay, okay. And this is a small thing, but it might help. As you go from page three to page four, the, the numbering missed a beat. So on page three of number three, and on page four it goes to number five. I think your number five was, so it's under use and dimensional requirements. Okay, yep, under use and dimension, I go one, two, three. Now it says five, you want, you want to say four, five, six?
Thank you.
Yep, that's tiny, tiny, that's all I could. Okay, so did we want to, what I thought we could do is we could have Kathleen do her walkthrough of her new language, and we would, we would listen to Alex.
I just did the walkthrough of the new language.
Yep, exactly, so next we would go to Alex. Exactly.
Just checking to see if I missed something.
No, no, you didn't at all. So let's hear from Alex, if, if we can bring Alex in as a panelist. That would be super. Rich says he's going to be joining us in a little bit, he's delayed with a family matter. Are we able to invite Alex into the panelists?
He'll be in shortly.
Oh, good, thank you.
Andy, can I make a request?
Yeah. Yes.
There is a particular provision I would like to discuss, we can decide when is the appropriate time. And also, given the, the significant changes that have been made, I'd like Kathleen to have an opportunity to tell us how this is a, these revisions really, how much of an improvement is it over what's on the books right now? Because it seems to me that some of the changes that have been made over the last month or two have really taken it back to not being significant changes. So if, if we could have that, that would be helpful.
Okay, I, I think we should discuss this as a board. Yeah, I think ideally after we hear from the public.
We've finished the public hearing on this, Denny.
Yeah, I know, I just understand that there's people here who, who said they wanted to speak to this tonight.
But we've closed the public hearing on it, and we have only an hour, we don't even have an hour, we have only forty minutes.
Let's, let's let Alex talk, I.
Alex, absolutely, because we asked him, that's totally legit, I don't have a problem with that. But I do have a problem with opening this up again, we closed the public hearing on this.
It, it's a public meeting, and people have spoken up, and we usually let people speak on the agenda items, I.
I would just like to make sure that the board members actually have time to speak. We've had many meetings where the board members have had no time to speak because the public comment period is extended for so long.
And I would explain, as Cheryl mentioned, the fact that this is a big improvement over what we currently have with temporary apartments.
And one of my concerns is that I, I've read some things on social media, I think there's misunderstandings about what this does, and that's why I asked for Kathleen to have an opportunity, actually before public, any public comment, to explain what's, what this does. What's on the books now, because I think there's a big misunderstanding out there.
Okay, Kathleen, did you want to take a few minutes now or after Alex?
Well, I would just like to remind folks that right now, I can't, you know, I had, we did for the town meeting before, do a PowerPoint presentation that explained the difference between what we have now, which is temporary apartments, that you have to get a special permit and a variance, because if you're building anything new, you need a variance from the Board of Appeals. So it's a two-part application to the Board of Appeals. It can only be the persons that are named on the permit. You have to record a permit at the Registry of Deeds that lists all of your kids, which is unfortunate. And if any of those people change, the permit isn't any good anymore. It's only good for five years, people always forget to renew it. And so, and it doesn't, it cannot be transferred on the sale. Once the property is sold, those owners that are known, that are named on the permit, that, the whole thing has to get ripped out. So it's a pretty cumbersome, expensive, and, you know, difficult process. And in this situation, now you would still, if you go ahead and vote these changes, you would still be going to the Board of Appeals as you do now. But it could be a unit that stays there. It doesn't have to be owner occupied, I mean, one of the properties has to be owner occupied, but you don't have to limit the occupancy of the second unit to a family member. It could be, you know, it could be a relative of a relative of a relative. And, and it also can be continued upon the sale of the property, doesn't have to get ripped out. The new owner files an affidavit that says that I understand that there's a special permit that has these terms and conditions, and I'm going to be occupying one of the two units. So while it is not the, the wish that I had to have as of right, there is no as of right, there is no amnesty, but it does allow a unit that once it's constructed, can be, the house can be sold without ripping it out. And it also doesn't require the issuance of a variance, because our existing bylaw says you can't make any changes. You can only put a temporary unit in something that's already built. So people have to go to the ZBA and ask to build an extension, get a variance for that, and then get a variance to allow them to put the ADU in. And this would get rid of that complicated process, which, you know, the Board of Appeals routinely grants them, but it's still a process that you have to go through, and it's just, you know, expensive and annoying. And as I said, it allows it to continue upon the sale. So in a brief statement, that's what the difference is. So this is an improvement over what we have, but with the cap of ten, which I would remind people that's in here. And, and the fact that you still have to go to the Board of Appeals, if that's the way you folks want to vote, that those protections have been included.
Okay, thank you. Could we let Rich in? He's in the, he needs to be added to the panel. Okay, great, great.
So can I just add one other question to the, the language? It's, I'm looking at the marked up version, so it's under E three, I believe, the paragraph that begins with the ADU shall contain no more than two bedrooms.
Right.
Okay. I thought we discussed eliminating that last sentence. Not allowing any change to the house, even if you're zoning compliant, isn't that pretty, I think unfair in a way, it's like.
Well, it's probably.
I mean, let's say you have a small house, let's say if you have a small house, and, you know, you, just because you put the ADU in, now you can't change, you can't add anything to your house, I mean.
Well, that's.
If it's zoning compliant, it doesn't seem like you should be able to put that provision in. I, I don't understand why it's there.
It, well, I think that was, you know, was done to sort of address some comments that Alex Whiteside had made earlier on. But, you know, I think, I think you're probably right in that it's probably illegal to limit people's constitutional rights to ask for a variance.
Yeah, I mean, and if it's zoning compliant, otherwise, how can you put that restriction in? I mean, I just have an overall comment that some of these things are just, you can do so much more with your existing single-family house with no input from anyone than what this allows than what this requires of an ADU. And I just want to remind people of that, I mean, there's no restriction who can live in your house really at the moment. You don't have to tell your neighbors if your mother's moving in, and nor should you have to. And really, I mean, there's, there's just, you can add on to your home without notifying your neighbors if you're zoning compliant. And, and these things are, now you're lumping the zoning compliant in with the non-compliant and sticking them into the same process. And we've heard from a number of people who, who felt that that was not something that they supported. So, I mean, there's, as I've said before, we've heard from different people with different viewpoints, and, and now we're, we're really taking this out of the hands of town meeting, and I think that's a shame.
Well, Kathleen is saying that that sentence was added because of something that Alex suggested, where Alex is going to be next on the roster, do you mind? I'm wondering what Alex thinks of that sentence, if, what are the implications of removing that sentence?
I can tell you.
Oh, okay, would, would you mind telling us, I don't know?
I hate the sentence.
Oh, you think it should come out?
It should be removed.
All right, well then.
Thank you, Alex.
Well, that was easy. Or now we're getting somewhere. Okay, then let's, let's let Alex go through his red lines.
All right, unfortunately, I can't share it, but I don't want to share the screen with what's on it because it doesn't help very much. So could you share the screen, Kathleen?
Okay. Okay.
My comments, I'm thrilled, I'm really thrilled that you, you you, you think a special permit for all of these things is the right way to go, it really is.
Oh, no, I didn't say it was the right way to go, I said I would agree to it. That's different.
I think it's the right way to go, and I'm thrilled that you, you agreed to do it, because I think that it offers a procedure that can, is very important, because if you try and do something as of right, you really lose your enforcement possibilities. But I'm not going to go into that because I, I think your agreement is great. I have suggested that the definition should be the definition in the statute. And the statute provides a definition of accessory dwelling unit. And the statute was passed after Kathleen's language. The statute is the most recent language, and it should be used on section B, where I suggest, I have a, a number of suggestions as to what a accessory dwelling unit should be beyond what the statute says. And part of it is that I say if an ADU is in a separate accessory structure, that structure shall exist in compliance with the zoning and shall have been built prior to January first, two thousand and twenty-two. And it should comply with.
May I ask a question of that provision, Alex?
Sure.
Why is it that if you could do a zoning compliant accessory structure and new construction, rather than existing, you see that as a problem?
Well, it's, it's, you can construct an accessory building, and then you can ask it be turned into a accessory dwelling unit, I suppose. The question is. What?
What's wrong with that? I mean, I don't understand.
Look, this is, you're, you're, you're creating two families zoning as defined in our bylaw, and you're saying that people can put little cottages around about containing their accessory dwelling unit. And I'm suggesting that either you have some real standards that say how you cite these things. In fact, Cheryl, I think that you should, you should jump on board this, because we need, if you're going to say you can go out and create these things wherever you want to, there should be some standards, and you, you should say it shouldn't have a flat roof, and it should have a peaked roof. That should be there, because if you don't say that, the Board of Appeals has nothing to go on, and they can't prevent a flat roof. It's, it's currently, currently, we don't allow these things in accessory buildings. This is an expansion, but an expansion, it should be limited somehow. I think it's reasonable to limit them to existing accessory structures, rather than saying you can go build these cottages wherever you want, containing a second unit for your house. It's, it's too much, in my view.
Even though there's still a cap of ten per year. The question really is whether it makes sense architecturally even to have it be an addition or within the existing, or does it make more sense to have it as something which can be detached? And I, you know, I've, I've designed several ADUs, and I find the linking them provision can be architecturally challenging, because you have something that might be coherent in and of itself, and doing the addition such that, you know, let's just say it's a big house, but the addition is limited in its size, and it's maybe only one story instead of two and a half, it can be a hard architectural marriage. Detached could be a better architectural solution, but you're, you're not allowing it now in your provision. And I think that that, that's a mistake from a design point of view, that, that's, that's what I have to say about that.
How about Cheryl, how about adding just a few architectural standards later? You know, later in the.
Because this prohibits them to be new construction, and that's what I'm trying to implore is, it should, why not let that be part of the special permit process if that? I have agreed that having a detached, it could be part of the special permit process, because there's more things that should, could be raised about it in terms of its citing and so forth, and then you could have it be the design as well. But to say that it only can be in an existing accessory structure, rather than what somebody might do is say, okay, I'm going to take my detached garage, I'm going to make that my accessory, and then I'm going to do an addition, which is going to be my garage. And then what's the coherence of the architecture of all of that? It's, it's, you know, and it's only because you have to meet this requirement that's put into the zoning.
Right.
That's not been flushed out from the design point of view.
What I'm saying is, if, 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 you know, you, you'd rather not go with the, you know, it's got to be an existing structure, then you say you can do a brand-new structure, and here's a couple of, you know, design guidelines, like, like we.
You already, sorry, Denny, we don't do design guidelines for residential properties anywhere in town unless you have a special subdivision. And we do say in this bylaw that, you know, in general, it's supposed to keep the look of, you know, a single-family dwelling. It's supposed to be looking, you know, something like what it is next to. But, you know, I think we should be giving the Board of Appeals the ability to sort of take a look and decide, you know, what, what they want to do or not do. You know.
To piggyback on that, if you, if I may, is that, one of the things that's wonderful about Milton's housing stock is there's a lot of variety in the, in the architecture and the design. And it would be pretty hard to say that, what the design standard would be, that would be, that we work for every one of those styles and every one of those locations. Having, having looked at that, you know, some, we have districts where the, the houses are, you know, starter home size, and we have some that are quite huge, and the standard for one is going to be quite a bit different than the other, so.
I just wanted to give the ZBA something they could, they could work with, just, just something they could work with a little bit later, but let's let Alex carry on.
Well, I agree, I, I think that there should be standards, especially if you're allowing new construction, because if you allow little boxes to go in, and don't give the Board of Appeals any ability to apply design requirements, you're making a huge mistake. And in the Carberry Residential Development, with all kinds of, all kinds of design requirements, and the fact that this is a small, these are small, there are people who will be affected. And why shouldn't you have standards that make it good architecture? And I, you know, just saying, it could be anything, so let's let it be anything, I don't think is right. I think that Cheryl, you should come up with some good standards, and they should be in the zoning. And the Board of Appeals will then have something to guide them.
We don't have it now in the temporary apartments, one.
We don't have, we don't allow people to make new little cottages.
I will make one last point on it. You know, as you know, Alex, my home was a nineteen fifty's mid-century modern home with a flat roof. And if you put a standard in that said I had to put in a pitched roof that looked like it belonged to a colonial, it would not be appropriate to this design, to this architecture. Now, I know that my house is not one of, of the most prominent designs or styles in this town, but my point is that there's variety in style, and it would be very hard to, to really dictate that. But your points, we both made our points.
You, you, we did it for Milton Village, we did it for Carberry, we can do it here. And there'd be an exception for flat-roofed houses.
We can see my mid-century modern house behind me.
With respect to who owns the property, you talk about the people on record, people holding a property in a trust. And I say, otherwise or otherwise own the property, because some people own it just by will. And so they're not on record except in the probate court. And so I'd add that language. I would add the language that a owner's spouse can be considered to be an owner in the event that there is a breakup, a marital breakup, so that if the property is in the husband's or wife's name, the other person can continue to live there. That's, it seems to me that's. That's it. It seems to me that's a good, a good provision. I say that, you know, in order to keep the owner on their toes, that they really have to live there. They have to file the affidavit initially that they're going to occupy it. And then they've got to renew it every three years.
The bill, the building inspector has already told us that he doesn't want to be bothered with that.
Well, I understand that. We'll give it to someone else to be bothered with. A, you know, if you don't require, if you just say at the beginning an affidavit and then there's nothing, there's never any further inquiry as to who's an owner occupant. You're not going to have owner occupancy. You have to have some sort of enforcement procedure. And an affidavit every three or four years filed with some town functionary is not the end of the world, especially since they're not going to lose their permit if they don't comply. They're simply going to be asked to file the affidavit. It's not too much to ask and it will allow owner occupancy to be a standard that can be enforced without it is nothing.
So I just have a question on that. So if 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 we're in a situation where somebody has an ADU and the neighbors say haven't seen him in, you know, four years or something, can the building inspector pop by and and chat?
Currently, the building inspector can.
Yes.
Under the current bylaw, the building inspector can go find out if the owner occupant is there. Under this, no.
Yes, he can.
Well, you say he can just under his inherent rights, but you don't say it in the zoning.
I don't think I have to. He already.
I say it in the zoning and what's wrong with saying it in the zoning?
Because it's too long, Alex.
It isn't too long.
It's just too long.
Well, I I think.
This is good zoning.
No, it's too long.
All right, the next, the next point is I say the ADU shall be maintained in decent, safe and sanitary condition.
You don't have to say that. It's already the law.
Requires that any apartment they subsidize be maintained in decent, safe and decent safe and sanitary condition. And why can't we say it? I mean, it it just makes sense. It's it doesn't hurt anything to say it's got to be decent, safe and sanitary. And it's a very short sentence, Kathleen. I say the building containing the ADU shall be maintained in good condition and repair. And that, once again, that's common sense.
How are you going to enforce that?
Want these things to be in a place that's falling down.
How are you going to enforce it?
You can enforce it. I mean, what do you mean? How do you enforce it?
How are you, you know?
You ask the building inspector to go look at it.
He already has the right to do that if there's a health and safety.
I mean, to say you already have the inherent right, why can't you say it? Maybe you don't have the inherent right. If you say it, you do. I think there was a lot of talk at the warrant committee about how these things are supposed to be for family members or caregivers. And there was no talk about how developers should be able to come in and do rental apartments in these things. And so I have suggested a provision where the first tenant will be a family member or a caregiver, or if there's a good reason, neither. But at least give the family members and caregivers a chance. Because if this is first come, first served, you know that the developers are going to be there on the day the application's open.
Wait, if it's an owner occupancy, how is it that the developer is going to become becoming a knocking on doors? If the developer is not living in the house, how can that work? I think that's a scare, that's really kind of a scare, almost a scare tactic, Alex. I'm sorry.
Look, you sell your house, you say you can put it, the developer says you have the right to accessory department. We've got the, you know, we've got the thing. We sell it to you, we'll get you an accessory apartment and you can then rent it out and get some dough. It it it's not hard to get on the list and have a owner occupant, so called, in the house.
I think I agree. I think it's it's a scare tactic. I think it's.
It is not a scare tactic at all. You have no way of of making sure that owners, that the family members and caregivers get a shot at this if you don't have a provision like this. And to say it's a scare tactic is not true. It's a smart tactic.
All right. So when we said that if you look at the housing production plan and all the data in it and and how many households that there's a single person living in a household. And one of our goals is to allow for people on fixed incomes to be able to stay in their homes. Because if they sell, where are they going to go? But maybe maintaining the home is becoming a challenge because of rising taxes, et cetera. Are they going to go to the Board of Appeal and say, and they're going to be made on public television to say, you know, I'm really having a little financial trouble here and I really want to be able to do this ADU to to help me maintain my home. Don't you see that as an embarrassing requirement to put somebody's income? Well.
I don't, I don't know. I.
I I just think it's going to be an absolute deterrent to that potential applicant.
I I I I don't see that as a they're they're saying that they
So what's the good cause?
It starts with family. It starts with a family member, right? So you you create an accessory dwelling unit for a family member.
Well, what if they don't have a family member?
Or caregiver or somebody.
They don't have a caregiver.
I mean, let's say it's Kathleen. Let's use Kathleen as an example. She doesn't.
Kathleen used to herself as an example, and she said she wanted somebody to shovel her snow. So I call that a caregiver. If they're mowing the lawn and shoveling the snow, I think she can call them a caregiver.
No, actually, it's going to be my boat captain who's going to take care of my boat as well. So.
Well, there it's, well, that's full care. I think you can, I think you can call that a caregiver.
I'm going to be like, you know, he's going to have like a job description that's going to be epic. Yeah.
Rich has his hand up, but I think Alex should finish before we start comment. Like, we all will have comments, but I think we should move along and let Alex finish unless Rich has something that he wants to add before.
No, I can wait. I was more logistics. Sorry, I got a mouthful of pizza right now. So I.
All right. You you may find it difficult to remember everything I want, but I hope that you, I hope that you do.
Well, yeah, logistical question, like, I just want to know when we, like, I want to get into it and talk about it. But there's a lot of back and forth right now, so I'm kind of holding off.
Okay, I say the owners of the premises shall be jointly and separately responsible for ensuring compliance with the special permit. That means that each owner, every owner, each owner, all of the owners, or just one of the owners is responsible. You don't have to have them all, just one of them. I think that in four, with all the requirements for the for the application, I would suggest that rather than requiring a registered professional architect or engineer, you add a surveyor. Because that could be quite an expensive plan, especially if it's entirely enclosed in the in the house. In fact, if it's entirely enclosed within the house, I think the application requirements could be made easier. Less, less, less would be needed.
Okay, one, one thing is if it's within the existing and it's considered a separate unit and the building code requires you to have separate exits, it may not be less complicated than you think. And it may require the architect's plan. So it it it, you know, the, if you're doing it in addition, then you would need the site plan, the survey, I think. If you're doing it within the existing, I think you need the architectural plan in order to truly evaluate it.
I have the separate entrances, as speaking of separate entrances, I'm glad you brought that up. That's in the statute. You've got to have a statute, a separate entrance, and that's in the definition that I proposed. It's not in what Kathleen has.
I've just typed it in.
Oh, there we go. You got your statute.
Yeah, because it depends where this ADU is, if it's on the second floor.
And Kathleen, while you're typing stuff in, you notice that the statute says half of the size of the principal dwelling unit is one of the conditions for an ADU in the statute is whichever is smallest. So you better put that in also.
I did.
Okay, thank you. Now, if we go to use in dimensional requirements, number one says that if an ADU is to be created in a single family dwelling, the building shall retain the appearance of a single family dwelling. If it's in an accessory building, the building shall not appear to be a separate single family dwelling. That's the language which I put in. That's a design standard, Cheryl. It's not a great design standard, and I understand it could be greater. And I would hope, I would hope that the design standards would be significantly beefed up because we want these things to look good. The and the next one also, I say subordinate in use, size and designs the principal dwelling unit and visually compatible therewith.
That's very common across our zoning, which I think is is general enough that it is.
If you like it, you like it.
Well, it's general enough that it can be adapted to different architectures. So that's what I think is appropriate.
Okay, and I say the lot needs to be of adequate size and configuration so that the ADU doesn't cause problems. And that's, you know, the Board of Appeals can juggle it around. I mean, I don't see that this is going to prevent ADUs from being created. But it could, it's a helpful provision to have to, if you've got a strange shaped lot, to cite these things in the best possible way. And this is what would permit that. The Board of Appeals has to be given permission to do these things. It can't do whatever it wants. Number three, I've discussed. Number four is I add the separate entrance, which is in the statute. Now, parking. Kathleen has changed the parking to say the parking has to be adequate, one sentence. And I think that you could, if you look at number six, my suggestion about parking, it says there shall be adequate parking reasonably necessary to meet the needs of the residents of the principal dwelling unit and the residents of the ADU. New parking spaces needed for provision of adequate parking shall be partially screened from neighboring parking. In no event, more than five vehicles on a lot. I think that just saying parking needs to be adequate, which is what Kathleen says, is not enough. This is totally consistent with, it's totally consistent with what Kathleen says. But it gives the Board of Appeals more, a better, a better grip on the parking situation. And parking could be tough. And when you talk about parking, bear in mind, the minimum standards would be here you have one parking space for the ADU. The zoning requires one parking space in a resident C district and two parking spaces in a residence double AA or B district. So it's either two or three parking spaces, which are the minimum. And the maximum is five. But some places may have a lot of need for parking and that should be able to be considered.
But when you say in no event more than five, what do you mean that they can still be considered?
I I mean, when the Board of Appeal says you need six spaces. If the Board of Appeals says you need six spaces, the applicant's going to have to do something and say, I'm going to kick my youngest son out. Or my youngest son is going to have to share a car with, that's what I mean. No more than five. That's what the zoning says. This just reinforces that. If you look at eight, it's once again, it's it's get a good design, exterior changes shall be compatible with the architectural style of the house. And careful attention shall be paid to the detailing. And the same is true with an accessory building. It's it's a design standard. It could be better, but it should not, it should definitely not be less.
Danny, can I chime in here real quick? I have to email the clerk of the Warren Committee and let them know what's going on for seven o'clock.
Right, can can you tell them that we're still in the throes of things? We haven't been able to deliberate and we still need to hear from the public.
What do you mean? What did, I'm sorry, what do you mean by seven o'clock?
No, 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 the warrant committee wants an update from us. They're talking about this article and they they would love to hear where we are at. Well, the this, the plan, Rich, is we heard from Kathleen. She gave us an update on the, on her language changes. Alex is walking through his suggested red line. And then we were going to hear from anyone from the public and then we were going to talk as a board about next steps. And and, you know, recommendations for the Warren Committee.
The Warren Committee is going to be considering the memory care first.
Right.
We've probably got a little bit of leeway here.
Okay, well, let's carry.
I I understood. I'm just trying to be respectful of the Warren Committee who asked me for an update at seven o'clock and applied to me that they wanted to take this up first thing. And I told them I would give them an update.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Tim.
We had promised them that.
I'm getting right down to the end.
They had told us they were going to start with the memory clinic first, so we are where we are. It takes as long as it takes. We have to keep going. Okay, carry on, Alex.
All right. Under nine, I say if there has been past detrimental use of a single family dwelling causing substantial detrimental effects on nearby residents or properties, the Board of Appeals can consider this. Doesn't say what they're supposed to do. It says they can consider the fact that there have been problems with the property as a single family dwelling. And the board can can issue appropriate conditions to make sure that when it becomes a two-family dwelling, it doesn't have problems, then the continuing problems.
So what, how, what standards is the board supposed to use to to determine if something's detrimental? Is it that there's children playing in the backyard is detrimental to one neighbor where that wouldn't be to others? Or someone has two dogs or three dogs barking in the backyard? I mean, what?
What is a nuisance? A nuisance is behavior that people take that the court looks at and says this behavior constitutes a nuisance. Or this behavior doesn't constitute a nuisance. The board looks at it. If it's kids playing in the backyard, there is no reasonable possibility that the board would say this is a substantial detriment to the neighbors. But I mean, if they're, if they're playing, if they're playing.
Alex, you're making my head explode. I can't even imagine putting that into a bylaw. I really can't. So it's just a, it's a license to have everybody complain about the fact that, well, I didn't like that dog. But now you have a different dog and, you know, that's a problem. Or now you have a fifth kid and that's an issue too, and I don't like ball playing and you're doing.
I don't think that that's what the ZBA would consider a nuisance. I don't, I think that there, I don't think that you would have considered.
For nuisances and they can.
What is your solution? Do you just tough with, even if they're running a drug den there, who cares? Nothing you can do about it.
You don't do that for single family houses now.
This is not a single family house. This is a two family house.
An accessory difference, accessory dwelling.
Two family house under our zoning.
Well, then you need to fix that.
And you can call an accessory dwelling unit. The only thing that makes it accessory is it's smaller than the principal dwelling unit. There's nothing else that's accessory about this. Accessory is supposed to be connected with the single family, and there's no connection here other than the fact. The only connection is that it's in this, on the same lot, basically, in any event. Temporary apartments. You suggest that you can just convert them. I say there has to be an application because the owner has to agree that they will take on the responsibilities incumbent on the owner of an ADU. And the apartment has to fit the requirements for an ADU. So you can't just convert it on a letter to the building inspector saying, please convert this. Got to be an application. I put that into my suggestions.
Okay, I would, I'd agree to that.
All right, well, that's good. In in two H two, where, where there's a new owner. The new owner has to agree to the special permit.
It's on record, Alex. It's already in the record. It's recorded at the registry indeed.
In the name of the prior owner.
It's still on the record. You're still.
Just getting the new owner to agree to comply with the terms of the special permit and file an affidavit is not the end of the world. It is just good enforcement procedure.
I will add it.
That gets, that gets me to the end. End of my comments.
All right, now I would respectfully ask for Kathleen to have additional time because it's seven o'clock, and Kathleen was asked to limit herself to seven minutes. So, and I would like to be able to get some commentary back to the warrant committee. So I think we should have a discussion before we hear from others about what the report back is to ask for. Having served on the warrant committee and respecting their time, I think we should give some report back as Tim has requested.
Okay, can I just ask for, to get a sense from the public if there was anyone here from the public? If they would raise their hand if they wanted to speak on this matter, so we have a sense of how many people we are talking about. And then okay, I see three people with their hands raised. Okay, I see four people with their hands raised. So, I mean, I think we could hear from the four people. I mean, the idea that we have a meeting and we don't hear from the public and we go ahead and vote without hearing from the public.
My suggestion would be, Danny, that we say to the warrant committee that give them a time at which we expect to have a vote. So that if they are discussing the memory care article first, at least they have an update as Tim has asked for from us close to seven o'clock. So I might suggest that we say seven thirty. I don't know what you others think, but.
I don't want to keep, we promised them on Monday that we would be diligent and quick on this.
I have a suggestion, just. So there seems like there's four, but usually when four, then there's more. So could we, you know, I'd prefer not to even do like a time per person. I think we should open it up maybe for a specific time and then move over to the planning board because I haven't said anything tonight. I do have comment. I have opinions. I agree with some of the things I heard. I don't agree with some of the things we heard. And so my comment, Tim, would be, I am not, I would not be happy if we gave an opinion to the planning board, I mean, to the Warren Committee at this point, because I haven't even got a chance to speak yet.
Yeah. Okay, so where we have four people who want to speak, we give them three minutes each. We could shift to deliberations in fifteen minutes. Does that sound good? Okay, all right, Liam Kelly. Liam, would you, would you like to share your comments for three minutes?
Yes.
Oh, hello. Good evening.
Michael Kelly. I'm on my son's computer.
Oh, hello, Michael Kelly, former planning board member. How are you? I recognize your voice.
Very good. Michael Kelly, one thirty-two Woodya Road, as Danny said, former planning board member. I see a lot of downside in this new accessory dwelling unit. For starters, I've just made some notes as people were talking, going to add vehicles. I already have four or five vehicles typically in my driveway, and I have a single family home. With cars, going to have more paving. You're going to end up seeing people paving front lawns and paving where they, you know, we don't like to see it necessarily, but it's going to happen. The people realize when they pave, there's going to be more taxes relative to the impermeable service that they're adding. So, you know, they may be adding expenses that they don't even know about. Schools, it's going to add children to schools. And relative to some other towns that I know had a history of this, people will take advantage of moving to the town just for the schools. The schools were a big attraction when I bought my house in Milton in ninety-nine. You're going to have people who are just going to try to get little apartments here just so they get their kids in school here. People may end up taking addresses, maybe pay people for addresses to say, well, we live in an accessory dwelling unit there, and they don't actually live there, just so maybe their kids can go to school in Milton. So there's going to be a lot of places that this could be taken advantage of. I'm wondering, can I, if I put an accessory dwelling unit in my house, can I advertise? Can I put in the Patriot Ledger that I have an apartment for sale or for rent? I'm having a very difficult time understanding the difference between this and two family. If I, if I live in Zone B and I need forty thousand square feet to build a single family home, I do that. But then soon as I do it, you're telling me I can build an accessory dwelling unit separate from the house on that forty thousand square feet. But yet, to build the house and be a single family home, I was required to have forty thousand square feet. But in reality, you're telling me I can have two houses there. Well, no, no, it's an accessory dwelling unit. Okay, it's a two family. No, it's an accessory dwelling. Well, it's two different families living there, and you've all made it very clear that it is two very distinctly different families. You know, there's something to be said for the relative living in the in-law apartment in a single family home. So it all is very twisted in a very cynical way, I think. It's very clearly a two family. It would seem to me that another way to take advantage of it, if I'm going to sell my single family home, I might as well go down and apply and get the permit. So then when I sell my house, I can say, tell the real estate agent, say, well, you can buy this single family home. Or you have the option of buying it and making money because you can have an apartment in there. Well, that's a two family. No, 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 it's not a two family. It's an accessory, accessible dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit. So it's all very, almost comical in my mind. It's a two family. It's two separate people. You made it again, very clear. Don't have to know who they are or what they are. So it's, it has all downside to me, and I don't see where the upside, and I don't see where the uproar was to have this happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Good evening. Let's see, Julie Joyce, Julie Joyce, good evening.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you for coming, for taking this. I have a few points. I live at one seventy-two Adam Street. And I moved to Milton after being in Dorchester for twenty-five years and lived in Milton prior to that. I grew up here. And one of the reasons that I did move from Dorchester is because I wanted to be in a suburb. And there was so much of this sort of dwelling and backyard, almost outhouse stuff in the Lowell Mills area that people were just shoving up, and they were able to, to have. And it caused such density in these areas, and nobody was really, nobody walked around to check out these. There was no enforcement from the city, and the city actually has a gigantic inspectional services department. And they actually have a program where they check on every rental property at least once in every four years or every five years, which does something to make sure that the smoke detectors are working. It does something to make sure the people are living in some kind of sanitary property. But I don't see Milton having the resources to, to enforce any of this. I don't see how Milton can suddenly, I mean, if you're adding ten a year, and I'm assuming that ten, if that's a hard, hard number in the sand, what happens when that person whose son is in a wheelchair or somebody, if somebody really needs this unit? Somebody who needs this actual in-law unit applies, we're going to say no to them? Because the ten people who were fast enough at town hall got the permits? I'll tell you, as a real estate agent, the soon as this goes through, you're going to have every person who's looking to downsize go right up to city, town hall, get this permit, get this approved, and they're going to have their houses on the market. This is not going to, if there's not major boundaries around this, this is not going to go to help the people that I know you want to help when you are suggesting this. You're trying to help people, the elderly, we're trying to help people keep their kids at the house. We're trying to keep people from spending a fortune on renting apartments in the city and other places. That's not what's going to happen to this if there is not major guidelines around it. The thing that I know was taken out is the by right language, which I'm very happy about. But one thing I do have a question on is I'm on an acre and a half and a forty-seven hundred square foot house. I heard two conflicting things. One is the dwelling unit would have to be nine hundred square feet. And the other one just said half of the original size. Now, I'm not sure which one was the final.
It's whichever is smaller.
Okay, so, so I could put a nine hundred square foot house in the back of my yard, but could I also put on a deck and a garage as well, or is that just the structure? We're just talking about the habitable structure.
It's just this structure itself, the ADU, has to be either no bigger than nine hundred square feet or one half the size of the, I can't remember the language. I'm trying to do an addition someplace.
Could I add a garage to that property and exterior decking and still fall in that nine hundred square feet?
It's the, the unit itself, not the things that you're putting on the, I mean, or you mean adding a deck or something?
On top of that, if I have nine hundred square feet of living space, am I still allowed additional space on the exterior of the property as a part of that dwelling unit?
If it's zoning compliant.
So that right there, I mean, for somebody like me who's got a big yard, I mean, and my neighbors don't get to come up and complain about this. If there's not a bigger butter process, this is going to be a disaster, and I just left a disaster. And I spent a lot of money not to be in a new disaster. So.
Well, as I said, it's now a special permit. If you have a special, if you have a special permit that describes what the unit is. And then that's a special permit and going with Alex's language too about the special permit. So you couldn't then, five years, four years, five years later, change the outside of the unit without going back to the board and getting permission?
Because the special. But my neighbors don't have to. Is there an abut a process on this?
If you go, if you have to, if you're changing what you've built under this special permit, you have to go back.
The original permit, say the original permit, do the abut is?
Your original notification. All right, it is a special, it's a special permit process. The original permit is a special permit process. There is no as of right anymore in this vote. I mean, people, we have to take this vote to do it, but if the change is approved by the board tonight, there is no as of right. You have to go get a special permit no matter what you're doing.
Which will trigger a butter involvement?
Yes.
Okay, and that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just point out something, Danny, just to be clear for people who are speaking? Even though the planning board will, will take votes, that doesn't make it law. You know, the planning board will send it to the warrant committee, who will send it to town meeting. And the final decision rests in town meeting on the zoning change. So I just want to make sure that people understand that whatever comes out of the planning board still has that much process left to it. And every person who's watching could reach out to their town meeting members with further comment.
It also needs a two thirds vote of town meeting, so.
Danny, can we switch to asking if there's any different, like if there's any new opinions? Just because, I mean, we've got three more and we're, we could keep going.
Okay, we would appreciate the next remaining speakers to focus on, on any new comments. Tony A., you have three minutes. If you could give us your name and address, Tony?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
My name is Tony Ahmed. I'm at seventy-one Lafayette Street, right off of one thirty-eight. So thank you for taking, first of all, bringing this up. I'm sorry I'm late to the party here. I just found out about all these recent developments yesterday or a couple of days ago. So I'm kind of been trying to catch up, so I apologize if I repeat myself, and I'll try to keep it as short as possible. The only thing I would say really is I would disagree with, I believe, Alex, the gentleman that spoke a little earlier today as far as having it attached. I foresaw that the problem with my mother a few years ago. Right now she cannot go up and downstairs very well. And I would love to keep her. I grew up in Milton. I'd love to stay here and have my kids stay here and whatnot. However, it's a big problem for her. And so, I mean, I live in a B level in a B lot. You know, I have to admit, it would be really re advantageous to me for childcare purposes, for family purposes and everything, to be able to have something here in the backyard to, you know, rather small, to, you know, to be able to have her there and not have it attached to the principal building. That's all. That's all. I'll keep it nice and short, and sorry again if I repeated anything.
No, that's fine. You didn't. Thank you. Good evening. Christopher Benson, if you could give us your name and address.
Hi there. It's actually Elaine Benson, sorry, under my husband's Zoom account. So Elaine Benson, sixty-seven Granite Place. Milton suffers from a severe housing shortage, and the misinformation and quite frankly, the scare tactics, I think, need to stop. You know, the fact is, production of new housing is not kept up with the escalating demand. There's not a lot of development space, and there's a limited supply of homes and rental units. That's prices, as you know, I'm sure, are astronomical. Milton needs housing opportunities, less restrictive opportunities, opportunities for people of all income levels, not just the wealthiest to win bidding wars, and people at all stages of life to live within our community. ADUs, in my opinion, provide just that. It's an opportunity for seniors and single family homes to age in place. It's a place for someone to potentially have a live-in nanny or a grandparent. Opportunities for independent house, housing for those with a disability. Rental income for empty nesters and for those on a fixed income, so on and so on. What's great about accessory dwelling units, from what I gather, is that they would be integrated into existing single family neighborhoods with little to no impact on the neighborhood character. The houses are owner occupied. The landlords live literally next to the property renters. Homes would still look like single family homes, and there's a parking requirement. And lastly, at nine hundred square feet or less, they'd presumably be more affordable than standard rentals throughout town. It also has far less of an econ, excuse me, an environmental impact to have an ADU, or as Mr. Whiteside said, little cottages than for a separate single family home. And I think environmental impact and sustainability is something that we need to keep, you know, at the forefront of what we're thinking. In terms of the as of right provision, I'm a hundred percent in favor of keeping that. You know, you don't lose enforcement possibilities as previously stated. And having as of right does not remove all the requirements that's been built into the zoning language. You know, there was a study done in Newton where they determined that by right permits for ADUs took approximately eight hours of staff time to process, while special permits averaged twenty-five hours of staff time. As of right would be seemingly more efficient and cost effective to process for Milton's building inspector. So I ask that that be left in the language for town meeting, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Good evening. Mr. Fahy. Good evening, Sean.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me, Danny?
Yes, yes, we can hear you, Mr. Fahy. Welcome.
I apologize. I'm driving while I'm speaking, so I apologize for that. Again, I thank you guys for your time, effort, and commitment to what you do. Like I've said before, I appreciate everything you do. I do not agree with the previous speaker, Elaine. I do agree with Mike Kelly, with everything that Mike Kelly has said. And I think I've stated previously that I don't believe this is good policy for the town. But that said, I have a real concern with, with how quickly you're trying to accomplish something here tonight. It's seven nineteen, and you're trying to take a vote, you're rushing to a vote. One of your own members, Rich, has yet to have a chance to speak, and we have another board or another committee in the town, you know, waiting for a handoff from this group. This is not what I consider good government. I think this should be, should not continue on. I think the planning board should allow for more time for this to be further discussed. It's my opinion that this is not the way that we should be doing things in the town. It's just far too rushed. You're under, you're all under too much pressure. And as I said, I think, you know, people are starting to emerge and. Um, and as I said, I, I think, you know, people are starting to emerge and chat, starting to understand the nature of this particular topic. Uh, I, I, I suggest to the board that this not move forward and that you withdraw what you're working on and continue for further discussion and comment from the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fahy. Thank you. Did, did we get your address at the beginning? I hope we did.
Uh, I will restate it. I am at two oh two Old Farm Road, Sean Fahy, two oh two Old Farm Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good night. Um, all right, I think um, we'll shift to deliberations. Um, and, and we may consider letting people speak after deliberations. I don't mind if I stay and I'm the only one listening at that point. I feel bad. We have thirty-six attendees. And if, and if anybody else wants to speak, I'm, I'm sorry, we have to go to the next item here. But let's go to um, let's go to deliberations and talk about um, next steps. Um, so, uh, Rich, did you want to, to say some thoughts?
Um, Yeah, sure. Um, I'm gonna just skip around a bit, but you know, in, in general, I just, you know, I, I, I really do appreciate and I hope, I don't want folks to take my lack of wanting to go too long with public comment for the fact that I'm, I'm trying to close that down. It's not, we, we've been actually deliberating on this and talking about this and listening to public comment for almost a year and a half now. Um, very publicly on, in phone, you know, on Zoom, in meetings. Um, this has been in the paper. I think it was even on the front page at one point. Um, so it's been out there. We've been listening to the neighbors and listening to folks across the town, listening to different boards for a long time and and honestly have been adapting this along the way. And so I know this might look like it's rushed at this point, but it is certainly not. We have spent a lot of hours on this. And I just want to point out, we're not voting for something to become a law. We're voting to put it in front of you all, town meeting members, to take this up and discuss it and either move it forward or change it or kill it. Um, I think personally, we've talked about this for too long at this point. I think we've beat this up enough. I think that if this was, you know, this is, this has been kind of contentious, I think, even on the board for quite a while. Um, and personally, I'd like to see this moved in front of the town and let the town have a voice on it. To not let the town have a voice on it, I think would be pretty unfortunate at this point. We've been deliberating to, for, for so long, they should be allowed. Um, I do want to talk about a couple of quick points. Um, and I don't want to go too deep into them, but I mean, just the things that worried me the most about some of the comments, and I don't mean these negative to anybody that raised them, but I just want us to be careful when we talk about. Um, you know, I think of the opportunity, like I, Elaine Benson and mentioned some comments about um, affordability. And then I've also heard, seen online, folks talk about, well, this isn't affordable. And there is two types of affordable, right? There's affordable, right? Affordable housing that's going to go through a public process. But then there is just, you know, something that's affordable to, to rent and buy. And we just don't have this in this town. Um, I mean, I live in East Milton and the prices over here. I don't think I can afford my house these days if I had to rebuy it. I mean, it's not affordable. And I think it's not a negative thing to say that somebody should be able to move from Boston or another area and find an affordable apartment to bring their kids into our school district because we have a great schools. I don't think that's a negative thing. I think that's a very positive thing. I think folks should be allowed to move in and have opportunity and not be blocked. Um, so I, I, I think we should be very careful when we start talking about, you know, I've heard others come on and talk about, you know, we've normally been able to in this town decide who gets to come into this town and buy houses, which I think is awful. Um, and we shouldn't be talking like that. Um, I think we have a great town and I, I'd like to see, you know, we've got what, eight, nine, ten, uh, forty Bs in front of us? And it's because we've created laws that make it impossible for growth in our town. Now, you, if you all hear me over the past three years or plus when I was on the Warren Committee, I am not for large scale development that's going to radically change neighborhoods. But I am for, especially when I spent time on the Affordable Housing Committee, I am for putting appropriate things and appropriate laws in our town so that it's not burdened in one area. I don't think that uh, Lower Mills area should have to have like a skyscraper to check our box. Or East Milton should have a skyscraper to check that box. I think we should start thinking of how we can do this in our town or what's going to happen and what is happening. We've got eight, nine forty Bs that are a reality and they're going to happen as long as, you know, those developers do the right things, they're going to get them. So you're going to have them in your areas. And quite honestly, if we created these laws years ago, I don't, maybe we wouldn't be in this predicament. Um, you know, so anyway, so I'm really, I, I worry a little bit about some of the comments that we've been getting um, about folks moving into this town for the wrong reasons and affordable. I do, I, I'm looking at Lexington, Hingham, I'm looking at really nice affluent towns have these laws in place, way more re, uh, non, non restrictive, not as restrictive as of what we're talking about. And I'm not seeing or hearing that there are major issues. Um, I'm all for making things better. I remember there's a woman on last time she was talking about equity and that made me really think, right? Like, it could easily be, you could easily say, well, it's, it's not an issue. Well, if somebody says it's an issue, I'd like to hear that opinion and find out how we can put something in there to make it better. But, and I know this is gonna, you know, be welcomed all, all, you know, a lot of folks on the call, but I really like the, as a right portion. I do not like the idea. Um, like, I, one of the things I think at some point we should talk about is, you know, the public process when neighbors get to weigh in. The way I'm hearing it, I, I don't think people realize that neighbors don't get to decide who lives next to them. I mean, there is a public process and neighbors get to talk, but it's mostly, you know, a neighbor can say, hey, that's not in a setback or that's not gonna hap, you know, that's gonna negatively affect us in a certain way. It's gonna block my house out of the sun, things like that. It's not, hey, I don't like what you're doing and I just don't want it, want it to happen. That's not what that law, I don't think, is about. And so I think, I think there's a lot of misinformation uh, for folks that haven't been on along for the ride and they're just seeing it now and they're hearing wrong things. And so I feel bad about that, but there's a lot of things that have been posed tonight that quite honestly just aren't, aren't reality. Um, that's my soapbox, but I, I'm, I'm for voting this through. I'm for the way it was. It sounds like maybe it's been tweaked a bit in a positive light. And if folks are good with that, I'm good too. I'm just not, I, I would like to go back to the, the, um, the as a right piece.
All right, um, see, does anybody else um, wanna speak about this?
Um, I would just like to say that I agree with everything Rich said.
Okay, nice. I have a hand up.
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't see hands. Go ahead, Meredith.
So, um, I've been doing a lot of listening and, you know, the warrant committee meeting the other night was really interesting. Um, just a lot of letters that we've received coming in. Um, I think we do need to be honest with the public that these are not affordable units. We have no control over what people charge or would people charge. So they are market rate and people will charge whatever they are able to, to, to be able to earn. Um, and the, because it is not an affordable unit and it's a market rate unit, these ADU units will make it more difficult to achieve our ten percent affordable housing goals. And, and as we are trying to meet those goals and prevent future forty Bs, um, ADUs will make it actually more challenging and we'll have to continually come up with more affordable units to compensate for ADUs. Um, I do believe it is an exception. Um, so it's not only just the use of the, of the site, but it's an exception to our underlining, underlying zoning. And that's why the special permit process is so important is because whenever you're making an exception to your zoning, it should go through a special permit process. Um, and that's simply why I believe that's um, the process it should go through. Um, there have been many good, um, but there have been significant changes to what the public has, has seen originally um, in the original ADU language that was originally posted. And I know we have been talking about this for a long time, but I think we've been waiting and even the last meeting, I myself had not even seen Kathleen's final version of language. So it's not by any, you know, by, um, we've been working as hard as we can on this, but we've had with memory care clinics, with all the other things that we've been dealing with. We have had limited time, like you said, Rich, for us to deliberate amongst ourselves and even really talk about this. So we've sort of been, we've been, it's been a work in progress. Um, and I think it's a good work in progress and I think we're moving forward. Um, and we've made, you know, a significant um, significant progress. Um, many, we found out, especially this past week, um, weren't even aware that this, that this, um, these zoning articles, um, and changes were even being considered. So a lot of people have really just found out and they want to weigh in and we've already closed the public process. So I think that was nice to be able to hear from a few people tonight. Um, I think zoning changes that would affect the entire town are too important to, to rush. We're still, you know, talking about language tonight, which I think a lot of good things that Kathleen was adding tonight. Um, I think it's just, it's, we've made it better. Um, that, um, it's just too important to move through. I think we should be able to deliberate this and give this time for the community to, to weigh in on, on where we are finally. Um, and given that we agree on, well, that Kathleen has agreed and put in the special permit, um, and listen
I only put that in for voting purposes. I
Thank you.
I don't like
I acknowledge that.
Phrase that I'm not agreeing to it.
No, no, but the one thing that I would just, I, that I would want to just ask for comments on because when I've been, what I've been hearing from a lot of the community and a lot of the public is we really want this ADU to meet the needs of those who, who really are the most needy. Um, and I'm hearing that it's a lot of people are really concerned about family, um, older generations, younger generations, but also caregivers for those who may have special needs, who need a caregiver or a caretaker at their house. And I just was going to throw out that, just to discuss with my fellow members, we have the cap currently, but if it was limited to family caregivers and caretakers, which seems to encompass what I've heard from all of the public and would actually prevent what I think of, many people are concerned about are speculators and investors coming into Milton and buying up and creating, creating ADUs for investment purposes. And I think I would be willing to remove the cap because I know some people are concerned about the cap if it was, if we limited it to family members, whether it, you know, it could be all different types of family members listed, but caregivers, it, which would mean including nannies that, you know, sitting and, and caretakers who would actually, you know, Kathleen, you said, I don't really have immediate family. But if you wanted to have somebody who would come and you wanted to travel and go, you know, go to Florida in the winter or, or go, somebody who sailing, somebody who would have care and concern for your property. And I think that's what distinguishes what are the, the needs in our town. And in, if it was limited to that, I have no issue with, with even not having a cap because I think, and I think that would eliminate a lot of the concern um, of the residents that, that we are. And Milton is, I will tell you, is just, you know, so desirable for developers to come into. Um, and that our greatest concern, and I think that's where the cap came from, it, that it is not investors coming in and they are getting this, they are getting the permits, but it's our, our residents who really have the needs that we really want to meet and address. So I just was going to throw that out. If that would be language that if we limited to that area that we, we didn't have a cap and we let as many people go through the special permit process, but it would be for their, for their, um, the needs for family caretakers and caregivers. Um, and so I think that was all that I had for comments, but um, so I think we're moving forward and making progress. Um, you know, I, I don't want there to be perception from the community that we're rushing this. I, I don't know if members would consider putting this on the Springtown meeting um, to give, to
We can't do that. We can't.
Well, uh, well, let's, let's continue to talk. I, I wanted to pick up on, on something that Meredith said. I was also looking. We have been inundated with letters and we have also had a lot of people come before us at the public hearing and at the Warren Committee and at different meetings. And I, I have, I, I started to think about it yesterday and reading some of the letters that the people who want this say that they want it for family. So that's the positive, that the people who want this want this for family. And that's sort of the way it's been positioned as this is something that will help our, our seniors age in place and, and, and so, so there's a big positive there. And then when I'm hearing from people who don't want this or are afraid of this, it's because they're, they don't love the idea of renters or strangers or, you know, like that, that's kind of what's putting them off. So it's a positive for the people who want it and it takes away a negative from the people who don't want it. So I think I would also be interested in possibly giving up the cap of ten if we could limit it to family. Because I think if it's limited to family, I don't think it's going to go, you know, bananas. Like it's, we don't have to worry about all seven thousand six hundred houses um, taking family. And I think it would be just um, those people who want to expand their family. And by the way, I think families do this all the time anyway. I think people take in their, I think we have multi-generations living in houses in Milton, and I think Milton is a very family town. And I think that that could be, I think that that would help. Um, I think that that would help this by law along.
I think there's something we would be missing if we did that. You know, let's think about maybe the young nurse who just took a job at Milton Hospital or maybe the staffer at Milton Academy or Milton High or one of our schools. And, you know, where are they going to live? You know, uh, what if they're single? You know, what if they're just starting, uh, starting out? And, or what about somebody who wants to uh, downsize and their kids don't live here? Um, you know, people move, families move. I moved many states away from where I grew up and where my parents live and where my siblings live. You know, um, I don't have family within mon, many, many miles of where I live. And so we're taking away opportunities for people who don't live near their families. And we're taking away opportunities for people who want to, who work here, who can't afford to buy here. And I think that's a mistake because we're, we're not, we're so worried about the ill effect that we're, uh, we're not meeting some of the goals that we said, set out to meet. Uh, and I think we're also not going to meet the goals of, of addressing some of the elders um, who, who could do, who could benefit not just from the income, but maybe from uh, the assistance with snowplow or snow shoveling and from company. You know, people are isolated right now, particularly with COVID. And, you know, people living in a single person household and we have over seventeen hundred of them in Milton. You know, that's a lot of people living by themselves. And so I, I, I don't support to, I, I think the cap is a reasonable way to start. We can evaluate how it works. But I think it's important to, to keep it open. I'd just like to say that many other communities have had these, uh, this bylaw, this kind of bylaw in place for some time. And I don't, there's many, many organizations, the state, MAPC, um, and ARP, we've talked about, all of them are pushing and really promoting, even nationwide. There's so much interest in ADUs uh, for all the reasons we've talked about. And it's not become, um, I mean, California is probably the one state that's experiencing a lot of ADUs. But Minnesota has completely eliminated single family zoning, you know, because of the reasons we've talked about. If we, what Rich said, I absolutely agree with. We need to add housing units. And if we don't want them as big, huge forty B developments, we have to find incremental ways of adding the units. And incremental ways, I think, include the ADUs. It could include some other things that we've talked about. I'd like to get back to like kind of conversion. Um, because dispersing the units throughout town is a more equitable way to deal with adding units than these monstrous forty Bs in people's backyards. And so, um, uh, I, I think if we want to be, I, I too agree with Rich about the, the comments that really become how exclusive is Milton? How, how many barriers do we want to put up to keep people out? You know, I, I'm really concerned about that. I think hearing about sort of, you know, what opportunities are there for people of all different um, phases of life, but income levels as well to, and backgrounds to live here? You know, is it, does it, is it really important that you uh, are born and raised in this area that you have, that you get to live here and someone else doesn't? You know, it's just, um, I, I think there's some things about what we're reining back in or not is really, is taking away from what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, well, um, I think we need to sort of I think we need to sort of figure out the language now. I, I am so grateful that Kathleen reached all the way over to, I'm, I'm sure to try to persuade me and possibly Meredith to be a yes vote by, by offering the, um, special permit. And I really think that the special permit for all three aspects is, is, is the best way to go. But I can see that Rich really wants to keep it as of right for the ones where you do not change the, um, the footprint, the basement or the attic. And I, I just, because I wanna be honest with my fellow board members and I, and I don't, I, I, I'm having trouble because I, I kind of feel like I'm going to end up being a no vote. Because I don't feel like it's ready. I know that Rich feels like we have talked about it ad nauseam. And, and in some ways we have, it's been tacked on to the end of a meeting here and an end of a meeting there. And we talk about the concepts, but in the last number of weeks, I have heard more feedback. And I was so focused on special permit or not special permit that I, I missed a couple of things. You know, I, I felt absolutely awful when the woman from the Equity Group came in. And please forgive me for not remembering her name. I think she's. Yes, um, and, and, and she was concerned that the limit of 10 was discriminatory. And that's the kind of thing that, you know, I feel awful about because I thought first come, first served wouldn't be discriminatory. And so in thinking about it further, I would love to have her back and have a meeting and say, I, I don't think that's discriminatory, but do you think that's discriminatory? And what, what is it that you would suggest instead? And have a conversation and work through that kind of issue. Because if it is discriminatory and I'm missing it, I don't want it to be discriminatory. So I do feel like we've, we've, we've had to rush this through and we've just been under so much pressure. And, and I think the community is too. I'm sorry, Mike, I'm getting a little bit choked up here because, you know, I've been sick with COVID and I'm, my whole family is, and, and I know so many other families are going through this. And we're just like, we gotta, we gotta decide by seven o'clock or, you know, and it's just kind of like, some issues are trickier than other issues. And I know, I, I can understand Kathleen can get tired of doing the revisions. But it seems like every time we do a revision, there, another bunch of issues come up. I thought the warrant committee asked wonderful questions the other night, you know, things that we didn't, I didn't really feel like we had great answers for. And I would have loved to have been like on, on, on our top game. And it's no, no fault of our own. It's not for lack of trying. I mean, we, we have.
I was on my top game. I wasn't even doing needlepoint. So.
You was on my top game. You're always great, Kathleen. I'm not, I'm not saying you weren't, but I'm just saying it, it, it was, um, oh, I, I think people come to this topic and they're all looking through a very personal lens because it's their homes. And everybody pictures, how would I do an ADU? And how would this work for me? And how would this work for my neighborhood? And I just think because of that, it's a very long conversation and it needs to be a, an open process. And if we're hearing from people who say, I feel like I've been left out of the process, then I, I don't feel comfortable, um, voting forward with this. So if you're putting the special permit in for me, you know, I'm gonna end up voting against it and I just wanna be transparent about that. So you don't, you don't have to.
So great, so I can take it out. Thank you.
You can, you can put it back to the configuration you want for Rich, if that's where you're going. Because I, I, I don't want you to put it in for me and for me to not vote on it. Cause earlier I had said, come on, let's just get this done. Give me the special permit. I'm with you. I mean, I'm, but I'm not, but I wanted a special permit that had more enforcements and so forth than, than you're willing to give. And, and I.
I think it's really an issue for town meeting to discuss. I mean, it's not just us five people on this planning board that should be dealing with this. This is a discussion that should be going before the town. And so, you know, people can vote yes or no. I mean, as I said, I, I would vote for it to go forward to town meeting, even if you had the special permit, knowing that when it came to town meeting, I could vote no. But, you know, this, this idea that we did this in secret and these emails. People are accusing you of doing this on the sly and not talking about it is just, it's just wrong. And I think given the time we have, it's quarter to eight. And I think at this point, we should just say, okay, fine, there's two votes we should take. One, should our draft include a special permit or leave in the as of right? And second, whether we should move this off to the warrant committee for consideration for the special town meeting.
Can I make just two quick comments, Kathleen, like, cause I, I do agree with you on that? Sorry, Tim, I know you were one step ahead of me, but do you mind if I just give you a quick, cause then I'm done? Anyway, so, um, talking about the cap and the, the equity piece. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I heard those comments and that made me think too. I think I mentioned that. However, I don't think there is a need for leave it in or remove it. I think there should be, like, so I'm not, um, a, an expert in the field, right? So I, I, there are, right? There are experts that look into this and, and, and understand it and, and could probably craft the language better than I. Maybe that's something we think about between now and town meeting about maybe there's an opportunity. And again, don't hold me to this, cause I'm just, it's a brainstorm thought. But maybe there's a way to create some opportunity that, you know, I heard a comment about affordable or disadvantaged, like maybe there's a, a, an avenue so that somebody could bring it forth that is not bound to a cap, but that there's a general cap. So I don't know how that would look, but I like the idea of the cap because I do think that there is a lot of worry in this town that all of a sudden there's gonna be thousands. I mean, the reality is I live in East Milton on Church Street. I could not put one of these in my yard. A lot of people over here can't. I, 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 the properties just aren't big enough. You probably could do something as of right in your house. And that's where I think, and you should be allowed to. I don't wanna rehash it, but you know, I agree with the extra comment Cheryl made. It's, you know, we're already looking at massive developments in some of the more denser areas. There is a whole lot of area, lot of geography in this town that isn't touched. And it is quickly pushed off. We don't want anything in our neighborhoods. And the reality is we need to start finding good equitable ways of doing these things. I'm not seeing this as being a disaster in any other town, not saying it will be here. But having a cap of 10 really gives us a lot of opportunity to slow this down or change it. Once you put it in place, if this becomes unruly, it can go to town meeting the very next time to be changed. It doesn't have to stay forever. Uh, it can be tweaked along the way. People forget that, you know, you can make change.
I'm trying to understand, do you want a cap or do you not want a cap?
So, so I'm fine with keeping it. Sounded like everybody, everybody that we've come before us so far. And one of the problems that I have though is, I, again, I'm thankful for everybody joining these calls and speaking. We get the letters. These are fantastic. I've sent letters to, to boards. The reality is though, at town meeting, we're gonna hear from representatives from all over the town. And, and we're only hearing from certain groups of towns on these calls. We are not hearing from the entire town. And so I do want this to go to town meeting. I like the way it is to speak to the cap. If, if you all said, hey, let's take the cap out, I'd be, my comment would be, are you sure? Because everybody seems to want it and I'm fine with that. I, I don't think we need a cap, but I'm fine with keeping it. Do I think there's probably an equity issue? We've already heard from an expert that there is. I'm not going to disagree with her. And so my comment would be is maybe, and I'm not gonna put this, I don't know, Tim, we have somebody that can help with this, but maybe we think of a way to put some language in there that gives an end around for somebody that, you know, is marginalized by this, you know, that we didn't intend.
So, um, and that's to my point is that we're still adding language and we're still considering language. And I, I just would ask my fellow members, I, I think we all wanna see this go to town meeting. So that's not even a question that we want this to go to. We want to have an ADU article go to town meeting. And I think that's the one thing we all agree on. What is the, what is the detriment of not putting it on the Winter Town Meeting? Versus another, and, and getting our language complete? Because I think there's a lot of good things that we have. And I think we've made it even better and stronger and more enforceable by both the building department and easier to interpret for the ZDA. What is the downside versus putting on this, this time, at this?
Because Meredith, my, my, my response on that would be that we are all talking to each other and have done this, talking to each other on this issue for al- almost a year. And it's really time to me, it seems, to present it to town meeting. Um, because that's where the decision should be made. That's where the discussion should happen. And that point, we can say our path has the article went before last year. Last spring, the same situation happened and we pulled it back. So let's get the input of town meeting.
So, okay, so then we would need to see, you were typing in things as Alex spoke. So we need to see.
Looking at the time, I'm ready to send what I want, what we could send, but we, I said, I, I.
Need to put it up on the screen so we can all see it.
I can do that, but we have to take a vote on the as of right or the special, or the special permit for everything. And then two, take a vote to send it to the warrant committee.
Okay, so can I, I think Meredith is right. Can we see it on the screen? We just, we've gone through detailed language in our meetings before and it's just what we have to do. I mean, and I'm sorry, Denny, if, if, uh, with your not feeling well.
No, no, I don't. I'm sorry, I got.
I appreciate that.
There, but no, I just, I just, I, I just feel like we have been, this has been an evolving process. I feel like every draft gets better. I was overjoyed when Kathleen said, well, let's do special permit for every option, because I'd been fighting for that for so long and I was so grateful.
Sorry, sorry, Denny.
I know. No, 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 when she offered to do it. But if I could finish, if I can finish my point. If I can finish my point, that I, 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 I wanna get this to a place where, where we have even more consensus. And we had, I mean, we had a lot of new voices in the last number of days. I felt like we were so swamped with 440 Granite App and the Memory Clinic. And we kind of were putting this on the back burner. We would look at it if we had a few minutes here or a few minutes there, but I felt like we were really finally digging in. And I feel like every virgin has gotten better. And we have public interest and we have public involvement. And unfortunately, like I'm, I'm afraid there are misunderstandings. And I, I, I'm just afraid, I, I just feel like we could put a much better foot forward if we spent a little bit more time on this. And I think, I think the, the, um, warrant in the spring, the, the.
You can't hold the warrant in the spring. That's.
So just real quick, um.
No, we, we could, we could add something to the spring warrant. We could ask them to open the warrant in the spring. We, we.
No, the warrant committee does not, nobody wants to do zoning at the spring, at the annual meeting.
I think they would allow us if.
They've been, they've been doing it, but, but.
They have been doing it. We have done it. That's not, that, that's, that's not, that's not a reason not to do it, Kathleen. We can get it on the, on the May warrant. If, if we want it on the May warrant, we can get it on.
It's five minutes of eight.
Okay, so Kathleen doesn't want it on the May warrant, but, but Meredith and I would think that we could do. We could do a better, better version.
So I'm not, I'm not in favor of that, only because here's my issue. And I know you all have been on these boards for a long time as well, but in my experience and just for people watching, I've spent six years on the warrant committee, this four years now here. What usually happens is what happened last time around. You, you will, it'll take another six months, a year, right? And right before we get ready to send it, we're going to be in the same place. I'm glad that people are coming out at this point, but there are gonna be new people coming out, new hesitations, new worries, and then it's gonna get kicked again. And I've seen things get kicked year over year over year. And my feeling is we've got hundreds of people that are sworn in every year to be on the town meeting. They're the ones that are gonna create this as a bylaw. We're giving our suggestions. We're gonna be there to answer questions. We're gonna be there to give our opinions. The rest of the town is gonna be there to give opinions and, and comments. I think it's, they deserve the right to be able to talk about this in that larger group with members from every part of the town, not just the folks that are tuning in this week or last week to, to put some final thoughts in. I don't think that's appropriate. I've been on enough boards to know that if you did it like that, you'll be in the same predicament that Milton has always been in. We just never change our bylaws. We never adapt. And this is why we've got 10 40Bs in front of us. This is not the silver bullet, but if we can't even get an ADU across, I mean, how the heck are we gonna do something harder?
So I was just gonna ask if Tim had his hand up earlier and I don't know if it was.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tim. I, I didn't see your hand.
More important for you guys to get this worked on. I had a, a point that maybe I'll make later, but, um, you should.
Okay, let's get this work done.
All right, I would like to just start at the top if we can, Kathleen, if I make a suggestion. Just the, I reviewed your draft earlier today. I reviewed Alex's draft earlier today. I highlighted things that I agreed and disagreed with. I don't know if any, if others had a chance to do that as well. But if we could just, so I'm familiar with the language. I just wanted to start at the top so we can take these votes. And, all right, so I think there's no question about sort of clerical things like I would see there. I, I think as you said, we need to take a vote on the, um, that, this change. And it sounds as if, um, Rich has expressed, everyone's expressed opinions about it. So I think it's just time to, to take a vote on that. And then continue on with other things.
So let me just tell you that in B, that's the statutory definition that Alex wanted. I've now typed it in. Um, and so that's the statutory definition of an ADU.
So you just went back, are you at C or B?
I'm on B. That's B. So I highlighted that change, but that's the statute that Alex wanted the language. And so I've put that in.
Can you just go back up to that B part?
Um, he had additional language about the idea that it was, you know, building that had to be built by January, whatever. And I didn't put that in. I just put the statutory definition of an ADU. And, um, and then in C is the, where this is the language that was the as of right. If you're doing it in your building and not making any changes. And, uh, that, so that's the, the language that we need to decide whether we want that in or out. Whether we wanna have as of right or not.
And that's all, I, I will just make a, a motion then to keep this language in C1 in.
I'd second it.
I think Denny has to make the motion. Is that correct?
No, she. Um, no, you, no, I, I, I can entertain a motion and so, so that's fine. Um, so, I mean, I think that I, I, I mean, I feel obligated to fight for special permit, but as I said, I, I'm gonna be a no vote on the article. And I didn't want, you know, to be disingenuous to my fellow board members because I had, I had really fought for that. And I, I, I had a feeling that this was a, a, a fig leaf to win me over. So I, I'm a little bit torn. Can, could we talk about that for a minute?
It wasn't a fig leaf. It was a desperate attempt on my part to sort of see whether or not there was some way to make this more acceptable. So I, but I think I've been convinced by Rich's discussion and by Cheryl and everybody else. And of course, in my own heart, that, you know, we should leave this with town meeting. They should have the opportunity to talk about it.
Well, I was gonna say that I would have actually voted to put this forward, but if, if it's by right, that completely changes what I have been hearing from the public. If you all read all the letters that have been coming in and everybody's speaking out, the town of Milton is, feels very strongly that this should be by special permit and.
That is not the town of Milton. That is 20 people who got organized.
The residents who I'm, who I'm hearing from. And, and I, just the principle of, of changing zoning, that you just don't change zoning. Single-family zoning.
And it's special, so it's.
So we're taking, so we're taking on the motion about whether or not this language in C1 stays in or out.
So just a comment, my own, my only comment for this would be, so, and, and just for what it's worth, uh, Denny, Meredith, you, you may be totally right. I mean, we may get to town meeting and this may be the only thing that somebody talks about and they change it. You, you may be totally right. I mean, we may get to town meeting and this may be the only thing that somebody talks about and they change it. And that's fine. I would just say that maybe, um. I don't know, I, I guess maybe something for Tim to talk about in a future time. Does it make it totally out of scope that they couldn't do that? Um, that'd be an interesting thing for me to hear. It won't change my opinion though, because this article, to me, a lot of what it does is right here in this, this point. This is either, and this isn't gonna add a lot of housing in our town, but it's either going to add an opportunity for us to say, hey. We're moving the needle. We have made some changes to our bylaws. We are being more inclusive. We are, we are trying. This is a step in that direction, in my opinion, and if we close it off. I don't know why we spent so much time on building this.
To that point, um, Rich, I would like to add that this is one of the. Uh, recommendations in the housing production plan. The housing, making progress on your housing production plan does have. Uh, implications for the forty Bs because, um, making progress in that plan is seen as by DHCD. Um, in, in a favorable way. Yeah, and you know, I just wanna remind folks that this was recommended in the. Master plan and in the housing production plan, both of which was, were adopted by planning boards. Not this exact composition of board, but prior boards have both adopted both of those plans. And, uh, I, I just wanted to point that out in terms of the relationship to the forty Bs.
Okay, um, okay, so I, I forget, someone made a motion and someone seconded it. Could, could we repeat the motion?
Yeah, so I made a motion, um, to leave in the language that's in C one. Um, before us on the screen.
Okay, and that effectively is keeping the, if you don't change the footprint, it's as of right.
Correct, just within the existing.
No special permit, okay. And so, so Cheryl wants to keep it that way, uh, Kathleen agreed.
We haven't taken, was this the motion?
Yeah, we need to take the vote.
Okay, uh, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Okay, so just, just clarifying. So he wants yes to keep it the way it is and C, okay, um, Meredith Hall?
No.
Danny Swinson, no.
We need to do ours too, our votes, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Cheryl's a guy, thank you, Cheryl.
Yes.
Okay, and Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Okay. Next. I, I'll entertain a motion on.
So let's, can we just scroll?
Scrolling down, let me just show you that I added the language that Alex asked for in number three. Stating that the owner or owners would be having to file an affidavit every three years with the building commissioner. The, um, language in number D would stay as it is. The creation of an ADU in the expansion of an existing dwelling or an attached building shall require the issuance of a special permit. That's in, in line with the as of right, um, vote that we've already taken.
Just for people who are listening, sorry, um, Rich.
You're gonna say what I was gonna say, so go ahead.
And my experience is that the likelihood of being able to do one of these in an existing house without doing in a, in addition is limited to very large homes. So I personally would have rather seen this be part of what's not, doesn't require a special permit. Um, and, um. That's all I have to say.
Is your suggestion on the language then? That a creation of a unit in a detached building shall require the special permit?
That's where we were. This got changed at some point, um, and. You know, I, I think, um, if you think about like, uh, the average single family home. And let's just say it's an elder that you're trying to, like, one of the speakers tonight, that you're trying to, um, accommodate in an ADU and. And let's just say the, a young family is gonna live in the main house. Most of our, the homes that are built in Milton were. Built one at a time when you have a lot of stairs to, or at least a number of stairs to get up to the first floor. And there might, so if you're someone who, uh, has mobility challenges as you get older or have, uh, some kind of other. Um, disability that creates mobility problems. It's hard to do, um, these things without changing the, the exterior. I mean, that's how you're getting into these places, you know, you have stairs on the outside. So my, my point is, we're not, I don't think you're gonna, I think you'll have a hard time getting to ten. Without, um, having to do an addition of some sort.
I think that's true. I mean, I, yeah, as I said, I think the, the studies that have been done by, um, you know, the Pioneer Institute and. The cities and towns that have already adopted it, they haven't had any more than five or six. Um, so, um, but we had said all along that the as of right was gonna be if you didn't have to make any major changes.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I jumped on you.
I'm still, that's right.
I just, I, 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 this is the one part, I think. Um, that the folks that are, that are, are voicing opinions on, you know, massive changes that could happen next door to them. This is the clause I feel like helps them. And so I, I, I would advocate that this stays and, you know, maybe if, if it wasn't overwhelmingly. That folks are coming in with that point. That I would say, you know, take it out, because I kind of agree, I agree with you, Kathleen. I don't think that all of a sudden we're gonna have thousands of these. However, this is what folks should look at as the thing that's gonna stop that from happening. You know, what we're talking about as, as of right is, uh, you know, I've got a refinished basement. I'm gonna add some kitchen equipment. And maybe change the doors and my mother's gonna move in. Or maybe it's big enough, I mean, the reality is, I, I don't have the square footage in my backyard to be putting some behemoth back there. Uh, and start renting it out. And so that is the spot that I think protects people. And so I would say we should keep it for that reason.
So I, I just wanted to give you an update. The, um, the, the warrant committee has adjourned for the evening, so.
We're done.
They were, they were sitting around, so they adjourned.
Yep.
What does that mean?
We're done.
What do you mean?
They can't, they're not gonna go forward with it.
So that means they closed the warrant at, at the end of their meeting? I don't get that.
I, I, all, all, all I know is that they, I, I just got an email from the warrant committee clerk and they, she said that they were wrapping up their meeting.
Can we clarify if we should continue? Would they accept this?
I think we told them, they told us on Monday they wouldn't accept.
I thought that the, the select board is going to open, reopen the warrant and accept. Then they would have to have a meeting about it.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, it's interesting that you asked this question because I researched the roles of warrant committees, finance committees and, um, the adoption of zoning. And our, and I looked at our charter and. It's really interesting because in most of the cities and towns that I've represented over the years. Um, the warrant committee just provides information on financial articles. Um, zoning articles, not, unless there was a financial implication to the town. Um, and the threat of adding too many schools, children is not a financial consideration that they could take into, that they could think about. It's interesting, as I said, just to sort of look at the history of how we, how the warrant, um, committee operates in this town to see. That it's very different from my experience in the.
But, Tim, Tim, can I ask you a question? Do you think we should continue? What, what, what do you think's going on?
I, I mean, you, you're almost done. Um, you might as well, you might as well have an article, is what I would say. The select board has said that they would entertain reopening the warrant, um, next week. Whether the warrant committee. Wants to meet again to discuss this or move on to other things, you may not get a recommendation from them, um, in which case.
It, it might be. So we've been, Rich and I both served on that warrant committee. There've been other times when it goes to print and there's no recommendation of the warrant committee when it goes to print. But there's a green sheet at town meeting, which does have the recommendation of the warrant committee. And given the fact that the select board has indicated they were willing to reopen the warrant to accept new language, I think we move forward and vote. Send it forward.
Absolutely. I mean, this would be, this would, if we, and I'm sorry, I apologize because if, if I thought that we were getting on a call. And we only had one hour to deliberate and vote, we, we should have set up the agenda completely different. Because we didn't start discussing until seven. And so.
We had no choice. We, we were obligated to go through the updates with Kathleen, go through the updates with Alex, hear from the public. We, we can't just rush in and vote. Take longer than we have, that's.
Well, we were gonna vote last, we were gonna go last time, but we decided to kick it out to do a few things. Then we should never agreed with the warrant committee that we had to have an answer by seven. I mean, the reality is, you'd never be done in one hour. I, I've never seen something in the years that I've been doing this, that something could be completed in one hour. Um, I, I'd like to keep going with this because I, I think, I think it's, oh, it would be terrible that if we spent this much time on this. And they're not, and the select board's not going to take it up.
The select board did say that they would be opening the article for us next week. I, I'm.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, but can I just ask a question, a, a, a minute ago, earlier? Were, were you discussing? Taking away the special permit from the additions?
Well, Rich mentioned that, um, he felt that this was important for people to understand that how it would limit it. I suggested that in my experience. With looking at these in, for a few families in Milton, that it's going to, it's hard to do them without an expansion. So I, I was hoping that an expansion would fall under, but I'm not pushing it. There's not, there's not. Larger support for it, but I just wanted to make the point when we were here, okay?
Okay, so we're not re, rewriting, we're not rewriting that, right?
Correct.
Okay, so as of right now, you need a special permit for detached, you need a special permit for an addition and as of now. As of right, if you don't change the footprint.
Correct.
Which, which gives folks the comfort, a little bit of comfort to think that, you know. The size of the property next door is not gonna start, because what, those are the emails that I've been seeing, at least today and yesterday. Folks are worried about massive expansion in their neighbor.
Well, let's carry on. What, what else do we need to do here, um, Kathleen? What else?
Just sort of saying, you know, just saying that, you know, we, um, the language we have for what's supposed to be in the application.
Can I just have a, right here?
Yep.
Technically, elevations aren't planned, so can you, after, where you have detailed elevation plans? Can you just strike the word plans?
Oh, elevations.
Elevations and then strike plans. Do you need to keep that red line or does that matter?
No.
Okay.
That was only to show the differences between what I submitted to the warrant committee. Um, and then in number E. Um, may issue a special permit authorizing the installation or use of an ADU. We would want that language within. In addition, yes.
Yeah, okay, keep that language from, based on what we just discussed.
Exactly. Trying to do that. Oops.
Well, she's changing that. I just have a question for people to be thinking about. If we have ten applications to the building department and ten applications to the board of appeals, how is that? Um, how is that gonna be handled? Simultaneously.
They got twelve applications for their forty Bs. They had to decide how quickly they could open them. I mean, I, I know people who've been waiting for a board of appeal hearings for months because they're backed up. That's just what happens if they get backed up for. Any kind of, uh, application, whether, if you have an existing home that's non-conforming. And you wanna do something to that home, you're, you're going to the board of appeal. And, you know, if you have anything.
Yeah, but if the date of application.
The way the building department works is if one, they get them by. Any application gets reviewed in the order in which it's received. So, like, let's say you apply for something that's going to be requiring an ADU. They're going to take, they're gonna take it in the order of all their other applications and then they'll, let's just say that it needs the, um, board of appeal opinion. It will get a letter saying that it, they need to apply, so it'll be a denial based on needing to go to the board of appeal. Then the applicant has to go to the board of appeal and ask for a hearing. And then they take them, however they take them, whatever priority they take them in.
But is the application date, the initial date that they apply, how is that gonna be determined?
They have to apply to the building department first, yeah, that's the.
And that'll be in order, so somebody would.
They take anything, they take everything in order. Whether it's applying to build a school or applying to build a, a deck. It's, you know, whenever they get it, that's the order they review them in.
Can, can I see H, I'm sorry, if, if, I, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about H two. H two. H two, H two, it says. Keep going, okay, H two. It says no more than ten special permits for ADUs shall be issued by the board of appeals in twelve month period. Shouldn't we say? Occupancy permits? Because this, this would mean that. The ADUs that don't need special permits don't have a limit on them. And we had all agreed on a limit of ten.
Good question.
No more than ten special permits for ADUs shall be issued by the board of appeal in any twelve month period. Maybe it's, maybe it's. No more than ten. Occupancy permits?
Yeah.
Well, I was gonna say, I think the issue is no more than ten building permits issued by the building commissioner, regardless of. How they come in, whether it's through an as of right or through, um, a, a, a special permit for the board of appeals, that's the.
Yeah, because once the building permit is issued, you know, depending upon, let's say it's issued in November. They're not gonna get occupancy that same year. You know, so I think tying it to the building permit versus the occupancy permit or special permit makes sense.
You're lowering it then, like, so whereas the as of right. Is not standing alone for things that come in through special permit? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. Before, you wouldn't have known about them. And so the cap wouldn't have applied to something that was done as a right.
Close the door if we had to create some opportunity for folks to come in through special permit, you know? I mean, cause I thought when we were talking about this, well, in, in extenuating circumstances, if we've already done ten. Maybe one of those extenuating circumstances is, you know, we've got. The, like, there's a low income opportunity or like an income qualified opportunity.
That's the thing, Rich. I would love to spend some time and think about needs base.
You're closing the door on it right here.
Well, I think, can I, can I just speak to that? Because I've done them in other towns. Long way to go before we could say that we were gonna be doing accessory affordable dwellings. And my thought on it would be, as chair of the community preservation committee. Um, is that, that, yes, that we would put that in our plan, that we would wanna do that. And then at that point, we would go back to town meeting and put in, um, we would ask town meeting for. An amendment to allow for an exclusion from the cap. For any accessory units that were going to be restricted to affordable housing.
So, so that, I, so that all makes sense to me. I agree with you. Now, let me just throw you one, say, um, thought. So what if, um, uh, so somebody, my mother, right? What if she wants to, oh, add something to her house, she wants to move a, a family member in? And she's not quick enough to get it in. And it seems like we got twelve month period, so it's rolling, it's not even calendar year. And so. You know, I was, I was understanding Linda when she came in, not to just mention what you did, but. You know, what about, what about just, you know? Somebody that wants to do it and they're not quick enough, like, if Meredith, I think you, not just, sorry, Meredith, I say you. You were talking about developers coming in, right? What if, what if, what if Meredith's right and, you know, money talks and they get there faster because they've got lawyers to jump in and. Not thinking that, of course, we know that our staff is not gonna take, you know, you know, somebody over somebody else. They take it as it comes, but. I'd imagine, like, an elderly person in a house is probably not as quick enough as a developer. As a developer or somebody with the means. And so. I was kind of hoping that there was an opportunity for somebody to come in and say, hey. ZBA, I might not be able to come in through that process, but I at least can come to you. But now what we're doing is we're we're capping everything that wasn't even capped before.
That's what Alex was saying, and that that's why, starting with our family and caretakers. That's why Alex was saying initially, give that opportunity to people who wanna move in elderly parents, grandchildren.
So I get that, but right now, a thousand people could fill out, you know, the applications to the ZBA. But not anymore. Am I right? Am I reading this wrong?
No, there was always a cap for the ten, ten, ten permits.
Okay, all right, then I'm wrong.
There was a cap for ten permits. No, you couldn't get a thousand special permits. There was a cap for special permits of ten.
All right, so then we're not changing it.
No, the fact of the matter, the fact of the matter is that there are apartments all over town. That are in people's houses that don't have anything.
No, agreed. So I agree with you now.
So you can go ahead and put in an apartment and nobody will know.
Okay, so I I thought we had a cap of ten for any new ADU. And now we're just making that the case. There was a tiny, it was almost like a technological error. And we're just fixing it.
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Yeah.
So what I would say here is, this is another one for town meeting to discuss because there were a number of people who spoke to us who didn't like the cap. And I I think it is something we wanna highlight for town meeting to discuss, just like. The as of right and just like the non-family member. Because those are the six sort of significant differences from the existing temporary apartment.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add to that. Um, I understand what Kathleen's saying about need-based and SHI unit. But I'm, I'm wondering, and I thought if we could have time, maybe meet with equity and fair housing people. And and think of any, any way, if there's a standard way of like. Creating a lottery or or a thing so that it, that 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 people who have a a. A defined need would get preference or something of that effect. So I I think. Family members should be, please, please allow me to finish. I think family members should should get precedence. And I think needs base should get precedence. And I understand Cheryl's concern about them having to go. Onto a cable access show and, you know, explain their hardship. But I I I'm just wondering, we have, we have people we can work with, maybe we can. You know, come up with a way that's thoughtful and caring for those who are in need. And and we can, and we can um, we can approach it that way. I think an ADU could be, you know. I I I would just like to spend more time on it, that's all.
The one thing I would say to that, Danny, is we could, just like we've done with other zoning is um. You know, that could be an amendment that we work on after we hear people's thoughts about this at town meeting on this particular item. Right, so. And I do, I I do think it would be helpful to get input from the um, Diversity and Inclusion Committee. But I don't think we should hold up sending it to town meeting because of that. I, there's gonna be a lot of debate about this. I think about this cap.
So too.
Yeah.
The problem with you. Just, I just have to say for the record, I disagree. I I think there's so much potential to make this better. And I I think with a little bit more time, it could be, but I'm just saying that for the record, you don't need to debate that with me. Let's carry on because. I'm in the minority and let's just carry on.
Okay, so. I've added the language that um, Alex had suggested in termination of the special permit that's highlighted in yellow. Um, they've agreed, the new owners would have to agree to. Provide by the provisions of the special permit, that's what Alex had suggested. And they have to request the Board of Appeals um, to transfer the permit to them without a hearing. They could just send in a. Letter and ask for it to be transferred. That's Alex's language. I added the yellow language here on uncur- non-compliance shall be caused for termination, whether or not, you know, that's just sort of a legal enforcement. Situation. And um.
Did you take out the sentence about not being able to add on to the?
Yes, I did. That's um, back in. Uh, that that, there it is.
There was one other thing I, let me just see, I picked up, I think it's probably a typo. Okay, thanks.
Um.
If you look at um. Trying to find which section it is, sorry, it was um. It was page under, under administration, H one. Uh, let's see now, let's see what that looks like now.
Procedural requirements.
Take down further, H.
On a rock and see temporary for administration.
Okay, wait, go back, right?
Yep.
There's a typo, I think, after, in the second sentence, no ADU shall occupied.
Oh, shall be occupied.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Um, I I just wanna stay for the record, I'm looking through Alex's changes and I I have to say, I think. It 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 could only make better to have a few design guidelines or standards. Um, in there. I I would like to see design standards, even if it's three sentences. Um, to just give the zoning board some guidance. Um, we are creating new dwelling units.
So are you looking at uh, for example? Like, like, for example, I think it was number.
Danny on page four, or his, his memo?
It's also on the bottom of page five of his with exterior changes. In terms of the compatibility, which I think is fine. To add.
Where does he have that in?
I was looking at the, it's number.
Oh, number eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Danny, were you referring to uh? Number one at the bottom of page four of his?
Yeah, I see. Yeah, I I thought eight and nine.
Right, so nine. I I don't, I I, I mentioned my concerns about the. I just feel like that's hard to describe, but because it's not really a design.
Okay, well, let's say, well, the.
Eight, but eight for sure.
Eight, yeah. And and I also think six about the parking. I think that that's. I think that's a real issue. I think we've had a lot of people from, well, a number of people have talked to me about the parking and I think his. Suggested language would go a long way with them.
I don't have issue, but I do wanna point out, someone mentioned part paving the front yard. We have separate zoning bylaws that address. How much pavement can be in the front yard for parking? Um, so the the, this wouldn't um, supersede that language elsewhere in the zoning. In other words, that still applies.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I was gonna ask that, um, I I wrote that as a note too and I forgot to bring it up. I mean, our laws still apply. You can't.
Yes. Right.
Um, anything without.
Thirty percent of the front yard. I mean, there's places that are in violation of that, honestly, I've seen, but.
Right.
That's, that's what's on the books. I also think if you wanted to add on the number five there from Alex's, I I'm looking at.
Let me just finish typing this, okay?
I was just thinking you could do a cut and paste or copy and paste, but sorry, Kathleen.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have his on the, on the um.
It's hard to do on the fly, sorry.
No, it's just that.
We end up doing this, though.
My typing was never good. I tell you right now, I had to take it in school and they threw me out of the class.
Well, it's one of the classes I took in high school that I was most thankful for, even though it wasn't like philosophy or math or whatever, right? But it's been helpful.
The old typewriters with the stickers over the keys.
Yeah.
You swing it back.
Yeah.
Is when the carriage went flying out of the typewriter that they said, could you please leave?
About the old correction paper that you had to put in when you needed to do a correction, right? Oh, my gosh. All right, we're dating ourselves.
Well, there's time to kill as you're typing. I I can remember having to redo papers just because I made a mistake in the last line of the entire page, so. That's enough, especially when you keep, no corrections.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Okay, so you wanted, so that's one, then you wanted up at five on the parking?
Well, that was six that Danny suggested.
Yeah. Well, five is.
Not here, though. It was, oh, I guess he added one, so it's. There's something different with the numbering.
Page four, it's under E, E, uh, it's number six. It's number six on page four.
Well, let me just see why the numbers aren't working.
Okay.
Two, three. Four, all, da, 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 da. That's five on his for some reason, okay? All right, so his parking is number six?
His parking.
The language you want instead?
There shall be adequate parking, yeah, reasonably necessary to meet the needs of the residents.
Oops. I hate this laptop. Sorry about that.
We put number six dark sky compliance on residential houses? Is that, is that a normal thing?
What?
Dark sky compliant fixtures on residential housing?
We don't have any of this kind of restriction on the typical residential. We might have it in things like. Uh, Willcut Woods, you know, or places like that. Um, or um, so Willcut Woods was under the Greater States PUD, but I, it might be there, Rich.
Don't wanna take it out?
You know what? I I don't know. I mean, it's just, I I say I work in commercial writing. And it makes sense in commercial. I just, heck, I mean, you could go up and down every street and you're gonna find it so much. Non, non-compliant, dark sky compliant fixtures. It just, it's not as. I I'm not the expert in residential, but it's not as prevalent in my opinion, but.
I think when you're adding density, I think dark sky compliant is kind of like adding business. It's, it, it, it helps you be a good neighbor. It's, it's really good for the environment because it, believe it or not.
Oh, I know what it is.
Insects, yeah, so you.
I know what it is. Well, so I I know what it is, but the problem is, is like, like, so if you went to front of my house, you would see a little like sconce on my house. That is a normal fixture that you would buy at Home Depot. It's kinda your only option. That is not dark sky compliant.
Okay.
Because there's spillover, right? It's not, it's not a hundred eighty degree cutoff. And so I I just, again, I'm not the residential expert. I mean, I didn't, Cheryl, is this some, I mean, do you do residential? Is this something you see? On a residential rule?
Well, uh, it wouldn't be, as you said, if you're going to go to Home Depot to buy the fixture. But if you went to a place like Yale or someplace and you said, I need a dark sky, yeah. Um, and if we limit it to the parking areas, maybe that makes sense, so it doesn't affect your front door light or something like that.
Yeah, a- and again, I, Danny, not trying to make it like, like um. Like I I wanna make it right, like I just worry that you put something in here that nobody could comply.
I hear you. That's right. Um, yeah, and I I I agree. The parking area is different than the front light on on your front door. It's a different light. I get that.
Yeah, you usually don't find wall, you don't find wall packs and that's what you see on the side of um, businesses, right? Those wall packs that are supposed to be like for the facade, but people like the walkway. And if you get dark sky compliant, you can't like the walkway, right? And that's what the point is. Um, but you don't put that on a residential house.
Right. I had, I changed it.
All right.
Can you just scroll up um, to? Sorry, just let me open up my.
Let me just put a star to show where I left off.
Right.
Oops.
Um.
Where?
So it was his five, which might be, yeah, it's your four. He had um, added. The ADU shall have an entrance separate from the entrance to the principal dwelling unit, provided that there may be a common entry hall or corridor. For the separate entrances. Do you have that somewhere else?
No, I didn't go into that kind of detail.
All right, so number four, you're at three, I think, at the end of where your cursor is. You see it?
In his?
In his, it's this, it's five in his, but in yours, it's four. It's the paragraph that starts with all stairways.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
I mean, it goes.
He skipped number four.
Yeah, I I just think it kinda goes to one of the design standards, I think, that maybe Danny was referring to. Like, I don't, I don't have any objection to that language, so if it helps with design standards.
You can keep going.
Cheryl, did you wanna talk about anything else?
I'm, was just looking through um. Alex's other comments.
He had a comment on decent, safe and sanitary, the good condition and disrepair.
I have a real issue about that because I think that's just a trigger for. Um, you know, fair housing language. Um, I don't see how you can do that for. Uh, you know, these dwellings when you're not doing that for anything else in town. Um. I think that, you know, I think that, I think that's a troubling, I think that's troubling.
Do we have regular language in our bylaws that, you know, if?
It's a health department and building department and yeah, regulation.
That the toilet planter on my front lawn, like, I'd imagine the town would have a problem with that, right?
I don't know. Bathtub virgins? I mean, you know, there's a history for that in this town.
He also made a, he also had a comment. He also made a, he also had a comment on who is actually responsible for compliance. Each owner, there must be.
Well, the occupants are. I mean, you have to comply.
The question is, no, it should be, the owner should be responsible, not the occupants.
But the owner lives there, too.
Right, it's, the owner should be named as the responsible party. Because the tenants, it might be Curry College kids, they're not going to be responsible for, it's the owner who has the ADU, so I, I think that might be important to say.
It's an accessory dwelling to the ownership that, so the ownership of the lot is still the same owner. So a landlord's liable for what their tenant does.
Exactly. So that's what Alex was just stating, that should be fair.
It's already, I mean, it's already the law.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I was just looking at a case where, you know, that, you know, it's a nuisance situation where a landlord, you know, doesn't take care of a tenant, he has to, has an obligation to tend, landlord's liable if they don't, you know, take care of their tenants, whether it's a family member or not.
Um, so I'm sorry, Meredith, were you at the little eight, the number eight there? I'm sorry.
He also did have eight, yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm sorry. Where, where were you in this document?
Um, you know, I was just taking notes. I didn't have the number beside that, but it followed the.
I, I thought he was saying that it was the owners, all of the owners, not just an individual owner. All of the owners would be responsible for the property. But in that way, the town could go to any one of the owners and say, you need to rectify a situation if it's, if it's out of whack instead of just going to one owner.
But that's the way. You have to name all of them anyway. When you're doing an enforcement action, you have to name the owners. You don't get to pick and choose.
So can I, sorry, if we're ready, I have another question. All right, so Danny said, okay.
You know, it's just hard to do this. It, it, it's just hard to do zoning, you know.
It's the way we.
Hard process, isn't it a hard process?
It is a hard process. I mean, but this is the way we've had to do, like, when we write our decisions and everything, just line by line, it's tedious, but that's what, it's the only way to do it in public, in the public process, I guess. I had a, when we talked about, he talked about something that I thought there was agreement on, so I want to make sure you picked it up. And it was under, sort of the end of page two, beginning of page three of his, which would be C3. Uh, so let's see, back up. All right, let's see.
E3 on his. This is E3 on page three, is that what you mean?
I had to begin, at the end of page two, beginning of page three, it was under general conditions and requirements for all accessory dwelling units, number three. So, yes, so there we go, where he had an owner's spouse may be considered an owner in the event of a marital breakup. I don't know if that was something that we discussed.
Um, I thought that was some kind of, because I mean, I suppose if, 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 um, if, uh, if you, you're on the deed and you get divorced, still on the deed.
Okay, so you don't think that's necessary.
It just changes the tenancy. So, you know, I'm married and my husband and I own the house by tenants by the entirety, and we get divorced. What happens then is that we own it as tenants in common. We still are record owners.
Okay.
And then if I, if, if I lose out, you know, I get divorced, I get tossed, you know. I'm not living there anymore, so.
Okay. Right.
He had a point, I mean, he was trying to say owners of record, and he was saying that we should say by will. But in, in the real estate world that I live in, owners of record means owners of record either at the Registry of Deeds or the Registry of Probate. That's all owners of record.
All right. So I don't have anything else.
All right, well, I want to entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to accept this version as a, as revised for submission to the select board.
Is it, just, I just want to be sure we do this right. Is it for recommendation? Oh, oh, it's for the select board to open the warrant, is that right?
Yep.
Can we just check with Tim? Tim, is that?
Yep.
Tim, is that what you're recommending?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias.
Yes.
Rich Beeler.
Oh, yeah.
Danny Swenson, no. Meredith Paul.
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. And, and I, I just wanted to say, I, I just, I do want to see the ADU go to town meeting. I just wanted to spend more time. I thought that the family member provision, I would have liked to have seen more design standards. I, I feel like it was rushed. I feel like, I, I just feel like it was a little half-baked. And I just wanted to make it the, the, the best we possibly could make it. I do think accessory dwelling units are a positive thing for our town, but I think we do need the right level of enforcements and so forth. And I thought with a little bit more time, a little bit more public process, it could have been a lot better. So, thank you. And I, I'm happy to stay and hear from the public if anybody, if, if anybody from the public would like to be heard. But I also respect, the planning board has been here for a lot of nights and may want to wrap it up at this point. And, and you might want to check the document, proofread it for little typos or errors because I didn't get to do that.
Did we, did we already talk about, there was other things on the agenda?
We have to do the budget.
And the 440 Granite Ave.
We talked about 440?
No.
We did.
Okay, so Tim, on 440, do we need to make a motion?
So we, we, we got a letter from, from Marion McCadrick, the attorney from the applicant. The applicant's family is going through some issues right now, and they have requested basically an extension of the, the time period by which the board would make its decision. You know, they're not going to be able to meaningfully participate in this process for a little bit. And so I, I think the suggestion in Marion's letter was an extension till the end of February. I, I don't know if it was the end or the middle or the beginning, but I, I think it would make sense for the board to kind of vote to extend to a kind of a certain date that we can revisit, you know, around that time and see if they're prepared to, to be engaged in the process or, or need to keep going.
All right, well, I, I wanted to send my, my, my well wishes and, and hope for a healthy and a speedy recovery for the family member. I, I have no objections to doing an extension. I, I know February 28th is our town meeting. Maybe it would make sense to do March 1st or something like that so that we're not trying to rush in a 440 discussion right in the middle of our town meeting business. I, I, do other members have thoughts on this?
Well, I mean, I, I think if you're going to do that, you might as well extend it to the, the 10th, which I think is the, the second Thursday of March, which would be a, a meeting date for the planning board.
Like, you're thinking, if, if others agree, I like that approach because we want to have two meetings a month ideally.
So I have no objections to that.
My New Year's resolution, it's only January 5th. I gotta stick to, stick to this, two, two meetings a month if we can do it. Okay. All right, nobody objects to, to granting this extension, so thank you.
You have to take a vote.
You have to take a vote. Okay.
I'll make a motion to extend the, the hearing, the deliberations on the special, on the site plan approval for 440 Granite Ave to March 10th at 7:15.
Okay, anyone want a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Rich Beeler?
Uh, yes.
Meredith Paul?
Yes.
Cheryl Skaias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Okay. Um, Tim. How about this? How about I just see if there's anybody here who would like to talk to us after the business update? Anybody from the public wanted to talk or be heard on the ADU accessory dwelling unit article on our agenda tonight? And please raise your hand if you wanted to be heard on that topic, so I have a sense. Okay. All right, I see no hands raised, so let us go on to Tim Chirwinski's business update.
Um, it was, I think, less of an update from, from me and more of a, you know, the, 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 the preliminary budget for the planning board is due on January 10th. It's a level budget. That's the directive coming down from the finance department, so whatever our appropriation was last year will be our appropriation this year. I, I, unless the board has a supplemental request, I, and I, I maybe, I don't know, forget if I emailed just Danny or I emailed everybody. I have been working, I've been working through with the Open Space and Recreation Planning Committee, which used to include a planning board member. Kathleen had to step down because she's taken on some other responsibilities on other boards. We'll talk about, maybe if the board wants to nominate someone else in her stead, but that's a board with the planning board, Conservation Commission, Historic Commission, since his members. We've kind of collectively that we're going to need some, some professional consulting help. And so the advice that I got from the finance director was to do a supplemental budget request for funds through the planning board budget to, to hopefully get an appropriation from town meeting for, for consulting services. This, you know, this is, it's supplemental. It doesn't, you know, it's, you know, your, your budget comes first. That's what town meetings are going to be considering. The supplemental portion will go through the warrant committee process. I'll make my pitch to the warrant committee. And, you know, it goes up or down, and we'll figure it out. If we don't get the money from town meeting, we'll get it somewhere else. I, I just wanted to kind of run that by you all, just to make sure that that's an okay thing. It's really more of a kind of logistical thing than anything else. It's, it's, I, I, I work with the planning board. I don't work with the Conservation Commission or the, or other boards or departments. So I, I don't have any say in their budgets. So, so that's one thing I wanted to run by you all, and, and maybe if there could be.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Because we talked about budgets and, you know, where we thought monies, where we had monies and what fiscal years and what we were going to be using them for. And I'm, it's unclear where we stand on those things. So we, we had the design guidelines for Milton Village. We had the calculation of land area dedicated to affordable housing, I think. So. And I'm not sure if there's anything else, but I know those for sure.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that I am trying to clean up in the planning board budget because those two things, so we, we, we have $40,000 encumbered for, for the design guidelines project. That is all set. We'll be able to pay those invoices. We have not yet procured the services for the, the land count because we still have some, some old contracts that are encumbered within the planning board budget that currently have us over budget, so there's no money available. But those are contracts that I think if we talk to the finance director and get those purchase orders closed, we'll get that, I say get that money back, it'll just, just moving numbers on a page. And so that's the, that's the reason there's been a delay in, in that.
Was there also the bicycle and pedestrian master plan?
So that's. That's out of the MPIC budget, yeah.
Yeah.
And so with the MPIC budget, just for, for your information, and if, if you're interested, there's a similar issue on the MPIC budget where the, the townwide traffic model contract is still coming out of the MPIC. Which I, I suppose is fine, but the nature of that contract is kind of, I, I'm trying to work with the select board and actually DPW and Traffic Commission to see if we can spend down that contract and then possibly get an appropriation for town meeting to give the Traffic Commission some money to, basically, if you're familiar with the way that the, the traffic model is designed, it's, it's something that, you know, if we have a traffic scenario that we want to test, whether it's related to development project or some type of town project, you know, we can sort of feed our consultant the information and say, this is the change we want to make, whether it's the direction of the street or adding a lane or taking away a lane. And they run it through the model, and there's a cost to that, you know, for their time and services. So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if we can maybe potentially arrange for appropriation for town meetings for the Traffic Commission to be able to kind of be the steward and the maintainer of that model, you know, and, and have the money to be able to do it. But that's another contract that I, I need to talk to finance about, just kind of get that off of MPIC's books so that we have a, a clear idea of like, okay, this is the money we have available.
Okay, so on, on the, on the wish list for spending money, I, I would love to see a parking management plan. I, I would love to see some investment on a parking management plan for East Milton and some shade tree plantings in East Milton in, in the center. I, I think that that would be so important in, in our future planning to have a parking management plan in East Milton, because every time we talk about anything planning or any project or any development in East Milton, we are talking about loading zones and we're talking about parking. And so if we could really kind of get ahead of it and invest some money and resources in that area.
I thought that you have a grant for that, that you're going to target towards that, Tim.
Um, not yet, but we do have some, some leads on some potential grant funding. So, so there's, there's definitely money that I'm kind of trying to pursue around that. That was one of the recommendations that came out of our rapid recovery plan. So, you know, that's, that's definitely something that we are, are looking after in, in a big way.
Okay, and another thing I'd love to see, East Milton's design guidelines, kind of like we're doing for Milton Village. I think it would be really, really cool to.
The one thing that I, I would like to just mention about the design guidelines in terms of the sequence of things is that the guidelines kind of need to know what is going to be allowed from a dimensional point of view. So for example, if you're going to have five stories in some areas, because you might say that the fifth floor has to step back, or you might say the fourth floor or something, and it's hard to know if you don't, if you don't know what your zoning is going to allow. You know, it's been recommendations in the Barrett Report, but that's not been voted by anything yet, or it's not been proposed as a zoning yet. So anyway, that's, that's my, like, when, if we think about, like, what the guidelines might say, you know, in, in large part, like, it's transitions, like, if you think of Milton Village, we talked about transitions to residential neighbors. So if you had, like, East Milton, the Barrett Report has some, some districts within the, the business district to kind of, and you might have different guidelines in the sub-districts because of they're up against the highway versus up against a residential. So I'm not, I, I just would say this, I wouldn't want to plow forward with guidelines without knowing what we're agreeing to on the, or thinking we want to propose for the dimensional.
I don't, I, I was sort of curious about that because I've never really heard of design guidelines being done, you know, separate from, from zoning. So, you know, when we didn't, when I'm, when we've done 40R districts, you know, there's been, there's been zoning for that, and you know, we've, and we've sort of designed standards as part of that. Um, right now, in East Milton, we haven't got a zoning change that we're proposing, right?
So one thing I would say is like, if we, if we use Milton Village as an example, MAPC did a draft zoning, and then they did some graphic analysis as part of that, as a follow-up. So, I mean, then one of the questions that came out of it has been, has a build-out analysis been done on this zoning? We know what could be built out under it?
Yeah.
And that's what MAPC. And that's what M A P C did. Then, once the M P I C took it further, I did some further tests of it and said, whoa, you know, this doesn't address this, what's in here so far doesn't address these concerns that we've heard, so how can we address those concerns? And, and I did it through some graphic testing first, so.
Allison has her hand up too, just to comment on that.
Hi, Allison.
Hi, Allison. Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I just wanted to bring up and, and I was gonna do it under staff update, but I think that might be up the, up the window for tonight. But since we're all on, on this subject and um, I have heard this too, um, and, you know, I know Jenny, you hear it all the time about, you know, the, the idea of as we're zoning, thinking about what that product, what, what that outward facing facade is gonna, how people are gonna receive it, I, I know that's a common thread in, in East Milton. And uh, one, I also staff M P I C. Um, one of the things that they're looking at right now is what is their next goal for the, for their, you know, coming up in this, in this year? And where the Milton Village, I think, was a very successful effort. You know, would that be something that maybe um, M P I C could take up kind of like the, the foundation of looking at um, next steps for some kind of zoning mechanism in East Milton Square that would include looking at, you know, what the outside, what the design is gonna be.
Yeah, so the committee discussed it and wanted to um not you know, usurper in any way impede planning board work or step on planning board work. So the, the way the committee's talked about it a couple of times and members are very interested in having that work in East Milton proceed forward. And so have suggested that the committee's interested in doing that and so wanted to uh, so Allison raised it on the committee's behalf, but that's, that's the sentiment of the members of the committee. That if there's interest from the planning board in having the committee work on it, then the committee would sort of follow along with how the committee did the work in Milton Village and then turn it over to the planning board.
All right, so that's food for thought, um, I am worried that I got Tim Truinsky's agenda item off track. Um, so back to the budget, I think your original question to us, Tim, was level funding, was that your original question?
I mean, it's, it's like, it's less of a question and more of, you know, just to kind of a, a check-in, I, I know. I, I had, um, I think I missed the, the meeting, I was probably at a forty B hearing. Um, when um, you, you had your original conversation about kind of your fiscal twenty-three budget. Um, you know, uh, Cheryl had kind of brought up fiscal twenty-two, um, you know, questions, I think if between, you know, because there, there was, you know, we're all familiar with the issue of, of, you know, you tried to get the guidelines of the clam study, you know, done for fiscal twenty-one, uh, you know, we couldn't get it done. You know, the finance directors told me if, if the planning board has a bright idea for something that they feel they can spend some budget on and, and get done between now and the end of the fiscal year. Um, you know, we could, we could make requests for free cash or reserve fund transfer or, or something, but you know, the, the clock is ticking on that sort of thing, um, you know, fiscal twenty-three, um, you know, as, as you always mentioned, you know, it's up to Tammy to decide if the appropriation's gonna happen and, and, you know, we'll figure that out when it happens, but um, we've had good luck um in recent town meetings. And so, you know, just kind of thinking about, you know, what are, what are, what are, what are the board's goals for, for the coming fiscal year, and I would even say the coming two fiscal years. Um, because the way that, you know, um, the, the accounting department is gonna want to approach budgeting is, you know, we've had a little bit of confusion and, and some of that is, is my fault because I'm learning every day about this stuff, you know, about, you know, capital budget versus operating budget versus, you know, other, other types of budget mechanisms. And I think the, the fundamental, you know, is, is, the board needs to have a good idea of what it wants to accomplish and how it's gonna spend its, its budget, you know, to do so, so the, the, the way, the thing that I liken it to is if, if we decide, and if the board decides that it wants to do a, you know, Randolph Ave land use plan, you know, from Chikatobet up to Milton Hill. Um, you know, and, and we think that's gonna take, you know, eighteen months and it's gonna cost seventy-five thousand bucks. Um, you know, that's something that we can work with our finance department and figure out, like, okay, what's it gonna look like for that? Um, you know, do you get the appropriation all in one lump sum in one year, or do we, you know, split it up over two years? You know, have we kind of looked at the fiscal twenty-four budget relative to outstanding contracts? And so really is just thinking deliberately about what you want to do. We can help the board figure out how long it's gonna take, um, and, and, and how much it's gonna take. And then we can start to map out what the budget requests, you know, look like. You know, the default is level funding. Um, but I think if, if the board has an initiative and they have contracts, um, we're obligated to pay that contract. And so we're gonna want to look towards the next fiscal year's budget to kind of, you know, uh, fill out the tail end of any open contracts and then continue with the board's priorities, I think, um, you know, again, you know, level funding is the default. Um, but I think if the board is able to make, you know, a pitch for fiscal twenty-three and fiscal twenty-four that, you know, we've got these goals and ambitions, um, you know, it's a conversation we can have with, with finance and with the board committee. Um, so I, I think that's kind of the general kind of gist of, um, you know, what, what, what I'm, what I'm getting at here, um, I don't think it necessarily needs to have a decision made tonight, but I think that as we go into this budget season, you know, having a good idea of, you know, July first, we can get some, some procurement documents out or contracts arranged, you know, we'll know, you know, there, there's time between May second, you know, when town meeting votes and July first, when the fiscal year begins, where we'll know we're gonna get an appropriation on July one. Um, and we can get moving on, on, you know, procuring vendors or, or lining up, you know, whatever types of materials or, or assistance we need. So we can hit the ground running in July and not be in a situation where it's, well, you know, it's January and we're still trying to figure things out.
Okay, well, thank you, Tim, thank you for being forward-thinking.
Can I just ask again, all the things that have been talked about are already have a funding source, because it's still unclear to me that the things we've all talked about are funded. So in other words, the opens, you're looking for additional funds somewhere else for the open space planning. We've got forty thousand encumbered for Milton Village under, and we've got the bike and ped for, under M P I C, and we've got the land area calculation or not. Because if it's forty grand for design guidelines from Milton Village, I can see East Milton being double that because it's land area and kind of transitions are really different. And let's say, like, we, we engage uh M A P C to help us draft zoning language and, and maybe some people don't think we need to do that, maybe we have board members or staff who can do it. But, I mean, I'm thinking if we're really trying to advance East Milton, and I don't live in East Milton, but I've heard enough people talk about East Milton for a long time, and I feel like we can't just stop with East Milton, I think we need like a hundred grand to really get us to an endpoint on East Milton, uh, and I don't think we should, you know, it, it, we have to make progress on these things, I, I, I'm really, I know we've talked about this, I know the M P I C talked about this a lot. There's tons and tons of studies of East Milton and they go on for decades with a lot of the same recommendations, and yet there's kind of inertia on getting them be over sort of goalposts, you know, of next steps, and so
I, I think Cheryl, I think, um, you know, you, you, you definitely raise a good point, and the other thing that Allison and I have been working on, and, and I have to kind of give Allison a lot of, a lot of credit, she's been really, um, you know, instrumental for the department in navigating all the various um, grant opportunities, you know, available from, from kind of state, federal sources. Um, what I'd love to be able to do is to start, and, and, and this is why it starts fundamentally with what are the board's goals? Um, and then it's, it's less about how do we spend our money, but it's more about what do we want to do? And then we figure out where the money comes from, you know, the planning board's got budget, the budget, you know, can serve as a seed for um, for, for, for other opportunities that could be leveraged, um, you know, we're looking at, um, you know, the Commonwealth has a, a sort of a community one-stop for planning and infrastructure grants that, um, you know, the, the, the cycle runs, it's kind of, you know, awards are made in October um, or November, Allison, when did we learn about the one-stop? November.
Um, so I, I think they're trying to speed it up a little bit this year because the, the dates are different. But I think we found out it was supposed to be September and we didn't get notification until October.
So it's, it's the type of thing where, you know, if we know what we want to do and we can map out, you know, a timeline for it, we can say, we're gonna spend X amount of planning board budget on July one for this aspect of the project. We're gonna apply to this grant program uh for, for the next phase of the project. Um, or we're gonna use planning board budget as, as a match for a grant, um, you know, which will improve our chances of, of, of getting it. Um, so it really, it really starts with
Sorry, Tim, can I just jump in on that match piece? Um, that's what happened in Milton Village, right? It was a match with, with M A P C. And we couldn't apply for more of that kind of match grant with M A P C in, until we actually moved forward with Milton Village, so once we passed that Milton Village, I understood that M A P C grant opportunities were available to us again. So I, something, I don't know if you've talked with them, but if you
Wait, Cheryl, can you repeat that? I'm sorry, I might have missed something.
Yeah, so my understanding was, you know, M A P C was a grant opportunity, a matching grant for Milton Village. And then while that took some time after M A P C's contract work was over, my understanding, and it may have been through Bill Clark at the time, that we couldn't apply for other comparable kind of grants through M A P C until they saw some action on the work that they had already done with us. But by having pa- having had town meeting pass the Milton Village zoning overlay, it, that progress has now happened, and so we could avail ourselves again of grant applications to M A P C.
Um, so that may very well, that may very well be true, um, I haven't, I haven't heard anything uh from them about that. I'll, I'll, I'll be honest, so last January, I applied for a local technical assistance grant for uh, their housing project, um, that is just getting off the ground for, for various reasons. We got that, um, and then it was kind of easy peasy, um, I'm gonna be submitting a um a, a similar grant application. Um, the, their, their cycle runs, kind of, it starts, you know, in January, they want to get applications in um, to do neighborhood planning in, in West Milton, um, to kind of, you know, what we're doing in East Milton is kind of later on in the process, we haven't really worked out in the western part of town, just uh very, very, very often, so um, I, I'm asking them for some technical assistance to kind of get something moving down there.
Um, so speaking of that, the, the B S A, Boston Society of Architects program that we were accepted into, has that begun?
I have not, I need to follow up with those guys, I have not, it's been radio silence, unfortunately. Um, and so I need to kind of get the block back. In the meantime, I didn't wanna, I don't, I don't wanna wait around, um, I wanna kind of start making some progress over there. Um, because I think that's the next kind of big area of town.
I agree with that, yeah, I mean, that area which hasn't received any attention, I think, does deserve attention. But I also hate to lose momentum in one place uh and start another initiative and have many things up in the air with none of them sort of hitting up. Yeah, a- and so I'd like, that's why I, I keep pushing because um I remember uh when the Falcone's were um first presenting their work in East Milton and neighbors came to the planning board and said, why aren't you doing something? You know, we're not equipped to negotiate with developers, we're not, we can't hire all the consultants to do the traffic analyses and massing analyses and scale analyses. And how many years have passed now since then? And, you know, I, 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 I'm sensitive to the fact that we've, we've done work, but it's really been at a sales pace. And uh, I'm trying to advocate if our board doesn't
Yeah, that's actually why I brought it up, I, I think, well, that I think the first step is
The parking management plan.
The parking management and the loading zone issue, and really, like, really tackling that, I think that that that's the first, the first step um to
There have been parking, yeah, I mean, I think there's been a lot of studies, what needs to be done is
It's not studies, I wanna see plans, I wanna see a program, I don't, whatever it is, I just want, I, I want to see, like, so when I go to East Milton, I don't know where to park. And I'm told there's plenty of parking, but when I get there, I don't know where to park and I am driving around all over the place, so I'm part of the problem. I'm causing the traffic in Ma- in East Milton every time I go there, because I was like, oh, I don't want to park in front of my house. Okay, I'm, I'm coming to Kathleen's from now on, but, and I don't mind, I'll walk, just tell me where to park, I'll walk and I want to do the businesses and I want to support, love the fruit market, all that's great. But we, so anyway, but I don't want to keep everybody, it's, it's nine fifteen, I, I think that Tim wanted to put a lot of, like, you know, seeds out there, I think we should, we should give this some thought, I, I
If the budget is going January tenth, we're not being meeting before then, I don't, we've talked about the budget a few times, we've thrown ideas out, we've not made any decisions. I get what you're saying, Danny, but
Yeah.
I, I do think at some point we do have to make decisions, and if the, if we're really being asked to be a little more specific, then, you know, I, I I think um you know, we need to make, we need to actually either take some votes or give Tim some direction, I don't, I don't know what he's seeking, but that, that's just my feeling. Because, you know, before we know it, you know, months pass by and
No, it's true, we, we rarely get to have a minute like this to just to think about things like this, but, but um I, I don't know if now is the best time to ask for a hundred thousand in East Milton during a pandemic and we've
Well, it could be a two-year period, so you could say it's fifty and fifty, but, or you go for, sorry, go ahead.
But I do think now is an okay time to ask Tim and Allison um, if they could look into how to get a parking plan or parking program, even signage and things like that, just to tell people like me where to park, I think that could go a long way possibly. Um, or even, you know, should we look into um, creating, buying a property in East Milton and doing parking, I don't know, but I, I just, I feel like that, I, I think that's something that we could tackle, and then that would help other discussions that are very difficult to even have, because you can't get past the parking topic. Um, but, but I'm open to people, other people's opinion on that, but I do think we should, um
Well, if we think about a matching grant opportunity and we said that we would put, allocate, you know, I mean, I don't know, that's why I was asking, I mean, these other things are all, we all agreed to fund, and that's why I was asking if those are all encumbered somewhere else, because I don't want to bump anything else out, but if we said, okay, fifty, and whether it all comes from planning board or some came from M P I C, because the M P I C is being uh asked to level fund to at thirty thousand. You know, we did, we use both planning board and M P I C funds in Milton Village, and we use both funds for traffic. And we spent a lot of money to, for traffic analysis in Milton Village and for, and targeted for East Milton with that a hundred thousand dollars that was encumbered, and so, and part of that was loading and part of it was parking utilization. And so it's just been a few years since anyone's looked at it, and that's why I just want to make sure that, you know, that we all look at the studies again, if we can dedicate some time to it, and then say we are interested in advancing it and we'd like to seek, we would like to say that fifty thousand dollars might be what the board could allocate towards it, and then ask the staff to pursue grant opportunities that can match that, at least it sets a goal and a direction. I just feel like we need to set that kind of goal and direction.
I mean, I, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is a general interest in, in really advancing planning in East Milton. Um, and I think it sounds like M P I C and the planning board are both in, interested in, in aspects of that, which is, which is good. Um, if, 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 if we're all kind of pointing in that direction, we can, um, you know, we can figure out kind of, you know, I, I, I've had some ideas about, you know, what is, you know, not just, and I think Danny kind of alluded to it a little bit more, you know, not just the parking management plan, but a kind of a general public realm plan for, for the square. Um, because it's not just parking, it's, it's the sidewalks, it's signage, it's getting across the street, it's, it's all of these things. And so, um, you know, is that something, and, and, and the thing that I've tried to impress upon everybody is, you know, just like you've all said, like, I've got, I've got, you know, three, three different, you know, in-depth parking studies, you know, going back a decade. Um, you know, the, the, the issue's been studied to death, we did, now we need, what are the best practices? What are the, what are the techniques, what are the, um, you know, what are the implementation methods to, to really sort of get things done? Um, you know, and so I, 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 I think that's something we can definitely sort of look into, price out, scope out. Um, you know, and, and then I think, you know, on the, the kind of the, the land use regulatory end, um, you know, I think there's still some conversation to have about, you know, what's the exact, you know, method, or, or do we want to talk about a forty-yard district was the implication of that, do we want to, you know, look at implementing recommendations in the Barrett report, what does that look like? Um, I think having some element of I think having some element of detailed design work. That goes kind of concurrently with the zoning exercising is going to be important. So that people kind of have an idea of what things are gonna look like as they get proposed. But I think so, it's good to know that there's a general interest in that geography. Because then I think we can work with those two budgets and kind of figure out how they can be leveraged and kind of stretched effectively.
But back to your other question is, I do support supplemental funding for the open space planning. Because you made the case for it when you said you wanted to do that work and how it was important to do. And that it sees what properties might be available for other uses like dedicated affordable housing. Because I know that's not our topic for tonight, but it goes back to the accessory dwelling and it goes back to the forty B, is that if the town can produce some. Because even though some of these forty Bs are being approved, it doesn't mean they're not going to be challenged. And it doesn't mean we're gonna have safe harbor for very long. And I do think we still have to be proactive about finding ways to produce affordable housing. And the M P I C did take a sort of a. Sort of a triage look at the town-owned properties and many of them have their own challenges of. Either being given or donated or deeded or whatever for recreation or open space. Or they have extensive wetlands or what have you, so there's not a lot available. And what I, Tim made a compelling case that this open space planning needed to be done. So to, so that we could really identify what's, what we might dedicate to affordable housing. So I would like to see that move forward in that language, because I think it does tie back to. This question of affordable housing.
I think it applies to all of CPA. I mean, I think affordable housing, it's open space, you know. What do we want to preserve as open space? What do we see as affordable housing opportunities or historic preservation? You know, it could be. You know, with the town farm, you know, could be all three, you know, in some ways, but. But yeah, I think, I think the Community Preservation Act funds, you know. That we'll have, we can utilize, you know, having an open space plan. I think, I think that's great. And Kathleen had actually, I don't know if Tim was not on the call, but I said I would be on that committee as a representative to help assist in any way, so.
Oh, great. Danny, can you? Can you write something up to the select board about that? And maybe, I don't know if you have voted on that previously or if you want to.
Let's vote on that right now. So.
Can we do it since it's not on the agenda? I don't want to cause a problem, but.
Yeah, I'm sure we've got some stickers in the attendees.
Let's put it in that next agenda. Thank you. That would be great. That'll just take two minutes.
Sorry, if you could also put on the agenda a vote for a new member to the M P I C. We had a resignation and we need a replacement and it's a joint appointment by the select board and the planning board.
Do you have the person?
We will, we will, we do, but we have to take a new vote next week.
Okay, okay, great. All right, so. You'll have it by next week, so, okay, okay, all right, sounds good. Great, thank you, Tim.
Do you want to maybe quickly vote to approve a supplemental budget request for the open space plan?
So moved.
All in favor, Rich Beeler? Kathleen O'Donnell? Meredith Paul? Cheryl Taggias? Danny Swenson, yes. Okay, Tim, thank you. And do you need anything else?
Have a happy new year, everybody.
Thank you. I need that.
And I hope you feel better, Danny.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And your family.
Have a good night. Oh, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, a second. Okay, all in favor, Cheryl Taggias? Meredith Paul?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Rich Beeler? Danny Swenson, yes.
Good night, everyone.
Everybody. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Bye bye now. Good night.